To stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have report of the board members. Danny? Natalie?
Okay, I'm gonna try to make this fast. So just a couple of quick shout outs. I attended Raytown High School's Into the Woods. It was exceptional as always. And then I got to take a sneak peek at the end of the talent show sponsored by Stu Co. And I want to say it was April that won. She danced to the arithmetics. And then today I got the pleasure of touring several schools, Eastwood Hills, looking at their community space. Fourth grade P E, kindergarten reading instruction. Where they really emphasize phenemic awareness with our new curriculum. Second grade math class where they were learning how to count to one dollar and really love their. I call it like an art parade where every single kid had an art piece and it was just like walking through an entire wing. Went to Laurel Hills Elementary. Where I observed kindergarten class, second grade reading with small group in independent instruction. And then a third grade class where they were learning about space after doing some research. And then I was able to see the fantastic library upgrade which was passed through a bond. The past one that I went to Northwood School and really took a look at their programs. Visited a daily living skills classroom which was also upgraded through one of the bonds. Music class where they're gonna be working on like an American Idol but Northwood Idol contest. Recreational therapy class, reading and math intensive instruction class. Reading comprehension and then observe how they do movement, brain breaks and calm down spaces. And then I saw a lot more one-on-one instruction with kindergartens learning how to match emotions. And then I visited the staff calm down room. That was nice. At Raytown High School, I got to catch up with yours truly. He's right there. Wave your hand. And just to do a little check in and then Westwood Elementary, second graders were learning. Parts of a graph and interactive lesson in kindergarten class. They were studying about animal habitats. And then my last tour of the day was at Raytown Middle in a project leadway class. They had just, everybody was finishing up some things with mapping. And two eighth grade classes where they were reading To Kill a Mockingbird. And researching different components connected to topics in the book. And I was in part of a scaffolded discussion to build their reading comprehension. And then just my own news, I just got back from DC and I was announced one of the national teachers of the year for the NEA nomination. That's it.
Anyone else?
Hello. I got to attend the Sparkle Conference. It was wonderful and I got to sit at the table with the kids. I didn't want to sit with the old folks. I sat at the table with the kids. It was highly informative. Lot of mental health stuff going on, self-esteem stuff. Thank you to our superintendent who put that on. Also this week I got to go to the mayor's prayer directors. Where a lot of the board members were there and they were. The whole group praying for all the leadership of Raytown. We need prayer. I don't know if you don't. I need prayer. Alright, those are the things that I've got chance to do.
Anyone else?
Well, first of all Natalie is probably being an understatement on her award there, so we probably should put out a press release on that because it's a pretty big deal that thing that Natalie won, so. We're pretty excited about that. Just a couple of things, repeat what Natalie said, Into the Woods was a fantastic production at Raytown High School. It's such a difficult. Difficult show to put on and they did a fantastic job. Proud of all those kids and staff that helped put that on. Got to go to the sender experience which was a fundraiser for REF and it was just fantastic and our new. Nursery space and the kids over there did a great job as always and just a full house and so hope. I think it was a successful event for you guys. Good. And then another thing that REF was involved in, went to youth baseball, the brand new one here in Raytown. They're starting up. Dave Patterson is the lead on that and. And REF is very important in helping our kids be able to. Be a part of that and this great new league is gonna hopefully help a lot of our kids play baseball and then popped into a Ray team meeting and like to like to surprise them. Once in a while, keep them on their toes, but love the collaboration in Ray team, so. Ready to hear your report tonight.
I attended also the Sparkle Conference and I took some sparkles home. I got it. So I got it. It was, it was really, it was really outstanding and look forward to the expansion of whatever. The other one be called. And so also Into the Woods, enjoyed that a lot. So appreciate the reports to the board members and I think that's it for information on that. Move on. Report of superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the community. At this time, I'd like to bring your attention to items eight point six. Mr. Gibson, would you please come forward to present information as it pertains to the annual employee onsite clinic review? You're good, Mr. Gibson.
Sorry. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Martin Knox. I'm here to introduce Ms. Erin Eason. She is with CBiz. And CBiz is the company that we work with in helping to manage our health clinic. And so she does an annual report to let you know kind of its performance, how, how things have gone. And I think she has some good news to share, so Ms. Erin Eason.
I don't know if they're gonna pull it up. Do you all have it in front of?
You can go ahead and start.
Go ahead and start. Okay. Well, it's nice to meet everyone. Thank you so much for having me today to talk a little bit about. The performance of our seventh year with the Raytown Quality Care Clinic. So this is. An offering that all employees who are enrolled in the health plan as well as their spouses and dependents have access to. And so on an annual basis, really on a weekly and sometimes monthly basis as well. We look at what the performances, make sure that we're engaging people in the way that we hope to and if we aren't. Make some adjustments, but thankfully this has been a really nice service for your staff for many years. So I'll spend a little time talking about. What we've done over the last seven years and then dig into the details around the performance in your sevens if you wanna, there you go. So I'm not gonna go through all of this. The, the. Health clinic has evolved as the needs of the population have evolved. So while we opened. With a physician-run clinic that dispenses medications, treats people for acute needs, chronic condition needs. We've evolved since then and added physical therapy, both that, that helps to treat occupational. Based injuries as well as personal health injuries. We have added a behavioral health counselor that sees people for stressors in their lives. We've incorporated virtual care and a home medication delivery program just to meet the needs of the population. While also the goal being to control healthcare costs. So. A lot has happened over the last seven years. In this last year of the health center, we saw over. A thousand individuals, so one thousand thirteen primarily employees were seen for personal health needs. We had over forty-seven hundred appointments kept and just over forty-four hundred, I'm sorry, scheduled and just over forty-four hundred kept. So the majority, large majority of appointments are kept. Twenty-five percent were virtual by phone or by video and that's been an important enhancement. It was obviously very important. In the midst of the pandemic, but it's continued to allow staff who are. Not ready or able to leave their classrooms or their schools still access the care that they need. During their, their workday and so it's been heavily utilized. It's also reduced our no-show rates, which is a really important statistic that we track to ensure that we're optimizing the staff that are in the health center. Forty-three percent of appointments were either preventive or for management of chronic conditions. So while we are. Happy to help folks with acute conditions like strep or ear infections. Our goal is to help. Build overall health and wellbeing and so to do that, our providers really focus on the underlying conditions that folks might have. There were an average of four point four visits per patient overall. We dispensed over twenty-three hundred medications onsite. We carry what's called a dispensary. It contains about. A hundred common medications, all generic. Anything from an antibiotic to a blood pressure medication. No narcotics, no brand names are carried in the health center. And then another two thousand medications were dispensed through the clinic home delivery program which is incredibly successful. That allows us to perform medication refills from within the health center without utilizing a provider visit which opens our provider's time. To see patients, which was really important for us as we were reaching our capacity. So we were able to. Add a service without having to add expensive provider hours, which has been a really nice benefit. Behavioral health, we had four hundred and fifteen appointments scheduled, three hundred and eighty of those were kept and we had ninety-seven unique behavioral health patients in two thousand and twenty-two. That's important. Because we had a fairly large span of time over six months where we were recruiting for another counselor. So that really happened. Within six months, we saw a hundred people for behavioral health needs. As we know, that's a pressing need of the entire community. And nationally a great need, so to be able to reach those folks was really powerful. And eighty-nine total health coaching appointments were, were kept. That's. A virtual service that premise who actually runs the health center offers. Then finally, we had a hundred and sixty-six P T appointments scheduled, a hundred and sixty of those were kept and saw thirty-seven unique patients. So they're being seen. For somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five visits per issue. Patient satisfaction continues to be one of the best in my book of business. We see, these, these are post-visit surveys that people are offered after their visit. They're asked if they want to provide feedback. They do. This is what we get. We had nearly a hundred percent, you can see down the board, rated their services as good or excellent. Ninety-eight, ninety-nine point eight. Indicated their privacy was well-maintained. That's something that's very important to us to focus on as an employer-based health center. Ninety-nine point seven indicated they would recommend this health center to others, their peers. Ninety-seven point six folks waited less than ten minutes. Over ninety percent waited less than five minutes. I'd encourage you all to remember the last time you went to a community provider and waited less than five minutes for the provider to walk in the door. That's what this is. And ninety-nine point seven folks, percent of folks indicated they were either likely or very likely to return. The word cloud to the right. Takes the free text comments that people have provided and makes the things that are repeated more larger. And so you can see very care, love, always doctor. And then if you look really hard, you'll see every staff person's name. That's not us picking and choosing. That's just based on what people say. And I'm not gonna read the next slide to you other than a couple of comments. These are folks who responded in the survey that they were. Willing to share their feedback. So we asked that question to make sure that we're maintaining their privacy. So I'm just gonna read a couple of these. As always, the staff shows that they care about you and your wellbeing. The most genuine doctor and staff I have dealt with in my sixty years on this planet. They always answer any questions I have with a complete factual, with complete factual answers and always with a smile. I'm beyond grateful that behavioral health has been added as a service. I believe a short course of treatment will not only be beneficial for my health, but will enable me. To support those I supervise more effectively. Grace upon grace. And then they'll call out for our wonderful health center manager. Megan is wonderful. I wish all healthcare was, was set up like this clinic, professional staff, easy scheduling. Although sometimes it's difficult to find an open appointment and twenty minutes or more for appointments means no waiting. So thank you. So. Finding appointments is something we monitor. We, we, our, our goal is same day, next day. But there are times where utilization flexes up and we have to figure out how to respond to that, but that's why we monitor on a, a weekly basis. So the last thing I just want to share with you is some estimated employee savings. These are fairly conservative numbers, assuming that a person instead of going to a clinic would have gone to a primary care office in the community. Where we know that oftentimes folks go to urgent care, minute clinics and even the ER. When they aren't able to get into their own provider's office, assuming they have one. So we assume a hundred and fourteen dollars per paid office visit. And the cost of a health center, of the health center visit is thirty dollars, thirty-five dollars for a PPO plan member. And then virtual visits because they were free during the emergency period are not included in these savings. So based on that. In one year, employees saved. A, a, a total of just shy of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on pharmacy costs. That's assuming the lowest pharmacy tier. Would have been twelve dollars in the, in the community, forty-one hundred dollars. So just over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and, and this is employee savings. So dollars in their pockets. And then since it opened in August of two thousand and fifteen, we've seen over seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars of employee savings. We've measured return on investment for many, many years, but as you kind of tip over into the health center being your, becoming your baseline, which we are at a seven-year period. We agreed to monitor utilization, ensure that it man, maintained or continued to grow, which it has. Versus looking at district savings, though the health plan has been performing really beautifully over the last couple of years. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions, just great, great job. Thank you for the report. It just makes me jealous that I'm not able to partake of that.
I, I echo that. There are many days that wish I could come. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask your attention to be. Drawn to article or item number eight point seven, Dr. Greiner. Ask for him to present strategic planning update with GND Association. Thought I saw Scott. Hey Scott.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton, Vice President Watson, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Scott Fuller in person. Some of you may have remembered Scott from his virtual visit with us back in the fall. Scott is in district this week, working with a representative team on strategic planning. We thought with some of the changes on the board, it'd be a great opportunity to provide an update on some of the work that's happened until now. With strategic planning as well as a look ahead to what we can expect in the next few months. So we're grateful for the partnership with GND. And I'll invite Scott to join you and provide some information and answer any questions you might have. Scott?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Martin Knox, Dr. Greiner, thank you. Pleasure to be here in district and I, it's always more fun to be here not on a screen and. Trying to figure out what everybody's thinking and just make it more personal and I'm glad to see new faces on the board and happy to update you on. Where we are in the process and what's coming next and then take some questions, obviously. First, just a little bit about us, who I am and who our company is. For those of you that. Aren't familiar, we're a Colorado-based company that's worked in over thirty-six states across the country, supporting people with. Everything from visioning and strategic planning to communication supports to instructional practice, coaching and executive coaching. We've been at it for well over a decade and we're all former educators and administrators who have done this work. We don't do anything that's canned, so what we really hang our hat on is getting to know who we're working with and really. Get in as partners so that we actually can tailor everything we do. To your needs, the needs of your community and your context. Certainly, we have structures around change management and how we organize strategic plans, but. One of the, one of the ideas we've put forward to your representative group is. That everything there needs to be you. We're not here to push an agenda. We're not here to tell you. What your context should be. We're thought partners and we provide structures. To enable you to set a vision of where you want to be over the next three to five years and actually be able to achieve that. Through really proven change management structures. So I'd love to just spend a little bit of time talking about how we do that and, and where we are in the process and. We start with this model and this is really how our company is built, but also how. Our systems are built and all of our structures around strategic planning and it's, it's a. Change management model and I know there's plenty out there. But for education, this one has made a lot of sense. It was developed by an educator, actually. And so what this model says, the Noster model, is that to get to achieve any sort of change or evolution that you're looking for as an organization. You really need five components to be in the, in place. The first and the one we'll talk the most about tonight is a vision. And when we talk about vision, we go beyond the. Vision statements that you see many places have a statement and some bullet points that are really aspirational and good things. But we don't believe they really paint the picture of who you are and what you're trying to do and. To truly get to where you're trying to go, we believe you have to manage, you have to imagine it in detail. So we talk about a comprehensive vision and that's comprised of several narratives, which I'll get into in a little bit, so. Not only having that vision, having that vision is just the first step. It needs to be commonly understood and bought into, not only internally but externally. From your wider community, everybody from your students to retirees, to people new to the community that may not even have students. In your district yet. So this is really about community investment and community onboarding to a vision which. Is a continual process that really never ends and certainly we provide recommendations and structures for that as well. Once that vision is in place, it's important to then say, okay, how do we make it actionable? It's nice to have really aspirational statements. And it's what we talk about as hard change versus soft change. The soft change and the fun part is really imagining where we want to go. Getting excited about that. The hard change is what I'm putting your representative group through over the next two days, which is. We have to get really detailed about how that's gonna look, how we're gonna pull it off. What that means for your district in the content, within the context of your district. So we do a lot of, we have a real, a lot of really good conversations about where we are. What strengths we should be leveraging, what successes we should be leveraging and then. What basically we break it down is what needs to start, what needs to stop and what needs to continue. To get to the levels of success we're looking for. Pass that and I'll be really quick here. Is Noster says that. In order to achieve that change and, and deliver on that action plan, you need to be mindful of the skills that the people have. In your community and your district. Do they have the skills needed to pull that off? And if not. How will we attend to that and build capacity across your entire district and community? Resources, what resources need to be in place, inclusive of time. Being realistic about timeframes for when we implement new initiatives. Being really mindful about embedding time in, so we're not asking people to tack on or add ten to twenty more hours. Under their workday to make this happen. This can't really be a bolt on. It has to be true transformation. And what we're trying to do. So that changes some working habits as well. And then finally incentives, why should people get on board? What's in it for them? And that's not always dollars and in fact, we, dollars, although it comes up, is not the number one incentive people have. People want to know that. The work we're doing is community-connected, that they want to, they want to see that, hey, this is gonna, we're planting seeds. For years to come through this work. Even if we don't see the fruit tomorrow. We will and generations ahead of us potentially will see it as well. So this is what we base everything off of. Now, the vision structure we use and you have a copy of. And you'll get a link to a, a Google Doc where you can leave some feedback. You have a copy of some vision narratives and there's five different narratives. We also have the branded version of that and this is all in draft form. Because we want to make sure you have inputs to this and provide feedback in the process. But the vision structure is we break it down into five narrative sets. One is for learning. What do we want learning to look like in the district? What does the teaching need to look like to support those learning models in the district? What does our, what do our leadership structures need to be in order to deliver on? This type of thing, but also how do we develop the leadership in this district? So it's sustainable beyond any one or two people. Pivot culture is one of the most dangerous things to a, a community in a school district. So visions and strategic plans have to be larger than one person. Or two people and so our structures help set up that sustainability and are really mindful about that. What professional learning do we need to engage in? And then finally, how do we interact with our wider community over the life of this vision and bring them in as true partners in the work that we're doing? So how did we get to these draft vision statements? Well, several inputs and first, we always start with. Learning about your district and having several conversations over many weeks, but. You know, one of the things we learned was there was already, given the fact that Dr. Martin Knox had. Come into the district new and she had her plan for coming in and how to engage the community and doing a lot of listening tours and. And onboarding so that people, just so that you all understood. What the needs were and, and what her charge was coming in. So we absolutely had conversations around that. We know there are internal surveys that happen, so any data. We can glean from that. Classic things like performance measures, where we are and what data is important to us and what we look at, what initiatives you have in play right now. Because again, this isn't about throwing out baby with the bathwater. This is looking to see, okay, what are the types of things we need to continue and then. Finally, our facilitated community engagement work, it's really fell into. Two categories. One, we put out an online, we co-developed and put out an online survey. And then we came in, we used that survey really to drive. The development of questions for face-to-face focus groups with several members of your community. And this is just a very high-level breakdown of who we talked to. We talked to forty-six students throughout your district. Face-to-face, really about eight to ten at a time. And then some really good hour, sometimes even plus. I don't know if they were trying to get out of class longer or whether they were just really interested, but. I can tell you the information we got. They seemed really interested. So it, it's a process. We encourage you to continue. Whether it's around a vision or strategic plan or not. The students not only enjoyed it, but they give amazing insights about direction. Five hundred and eighty-two parents and community members. And again, we had, we had a great group of community members in this very room that. I think we kept Dr. Greiner here fairly late one evening and actually had about a two-hour conversation with that group. Really informative, great representation. Two hundred and twenty-nine of your staff members. And that was inclusive of all departments, certified classified staff. So we, we talked to as many people as we could from facilities and maintenance to transportation. To our secretaries and educational support personnel and then obviously our teachers. Dr. Greiner enabled us to have conversations with all of your principals. Via Zoom, because I believe we had a snow day when I was here. To talk to them, so we missed that day, but we did, we were able to make it up. And then the vision development team, the team that Dr. Greiner referred to, which consists of. Six executive leadership team members. six executive leadership team members. Mr. Burton was able to join us for the visioning process as his schedule allowed. And then we have principal representation as well in the room. Giving a total of eight hundred and sixty-eight members of the Raytown Quality Schools community that we were able to get input from just directly to us. So next step, we have a draft in front of you and I believe it's in your board packets. And like I said, you'll get a link and I want to give you several options for how you do this for your own comfort level. You'll have a link to a Google Doc with the same narratives. And you're welcome to comment on that. You're welcome to make your own copy and comment on that and shoot it back to us. If you're more comfortable just downloading what you have and even writing, writing notes on it and taking pictures and sending it on to us, we're happy with that. So whatever method works best for you to give feedback and and input onto those drafts so that we can help you all make adjustments and get the wording just right for where you want it. That'd be really helpful. Ideally, that would happen in the next couple of weeks, certainly before Memorial Day would be ideal. So we can continue to move forward. However, we're accommodating. It's about your timeline. So if you need more time for that, just let us know. I'm not problematic. As Dr. Griner said, we're engaged in strategic planning processes where we actually break that those, the ideas and that vision down. And we start saying, okay, if this is what we said we're going to do, how are we going to do it? What are the steps and actual deliverables we need to have in place over the next three to five years to make sure it happens? And then we're moving into what are the action steps? Who needs to be involved? And what are the really clear and transparent success criteria and smart goal format, both qualitative and quantitative? So you can know what to expect is in terms of success, what does success looks like, look like? And even then we'll get into structures of how you garner support. So community engagement is one of those things that we believe should never stop. And so it's a continual process. So we recommend taking a vision and a strategic plan on tour around the community, get people into it, ask them what their hopes and hesitations are about it. Those hesitations are really helpful because they help you and how do we best communicate our work going forward? Are there tweaks and adjustments we need to make along the way? And do we just need to invest in helping people with deeper understanding about the work we're doing? Helps us with professional learning as well and our internal community. And then getting into implementation, we have some very clear structures that we know work once you get into implementation such as regular health checks of each project in your strategic plan, how to come back to the board and how often to come back to the board and some good formats that have been successful with other boards around the country for regular reporting of the progress on a strategic plan. And then getting into annual plan record where we look at what we've accomplished, what we still need to work on and reprioritizing based on what we've learned. So that's actually an annual process that's meant to be flexible and grow with you as a district. If you dig into the work and continue to learn, a true plan needs to be flexible to do that. And that's what we have set up. And then finally transparency and storytelling. How do we, how do we share windows into the work and windows into our classrooms and how a strategic plan is impacting us as a district and us as a community? So that your community can truly partner on it, but also celebrate with you and help with word of mouth about the great things that are happening in this district. So I know that's quick, that's very high level. With that, I'd love to open it up if you have any questions, comments. And like I said, my, my email address is in the presentation that I think you have access to in there. Please feel free to reach out if if you have any questions or if you need any support with the feedback structure on the vision draft. Now, thank you for your time. I'm excited about the work your team's doing and where the community is headed. So it's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Moving through the agenda for item eight point eight, Dr. Tarvin will present updates pertaining to summer school. Dr. Tarvin.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox. President Burton and Vice President Watson and the rest of the members of the board. I am excited to tell you that summer school plans are well underway. We finished our first round of enrollment on Friday. As of today, we have three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven students enrolled. That's just slightly under a hundred compared to last year. That breaks down to forty pre-K students, one thousand six hundred and ninety-eight elementary students, six hundred and forty-eight nine middle school students and one thousand eighty high school students. So we are excited that we have this many students enrolled. And I've been telling the principals, now we just have to keep them here. So we have lots of good programming, good instruction planned for them. We will open our enrollment back up on Thursday for a second round. Any students who enroll from now on will be placed on waitlist and put into any seats that we have available. Transportation was guaranteed through Friday. Students moving forward may or may not have transportation as seats are available as well. That was really all I have for you tonight, but I wanted to check in with you, let you know where those enrollment numbers stood and see if you had any questions for me. We try to get between forty and fifty percent of district enrollment. So we're close to that ballpark, I think. After we get any other students to enroll in the next month, that we'll hit that ballpark. We welcome all students who are wanting to enroll in summer school for pre-K through eight. We've rebranded it as Summer Enrichment Camp this year. And we welcome all students. We do provide title reading and math supports for our elementary students. We are adding reading supports for our middle school students that we have not provided in the past. So those students will get extra support as well. For high school, we offer some first-time credits and we also offer some recovery credits for students who are needing to make up courses that they didn't pass the first time. Yes, our staffing is in a much better place than it was a year ago. We've had lots more staff wanting to work. And that's a great place for us to be both with students and staff.
Excuse me for a sec. For members, remember to turn on your mics.
Was there a difference in any particular right level?
Really, as I looked at the numbers this morning, those numbers are about on par with where we were a year ago at all three levels. So we we are happy with how things have turned around, turned out so far this enrollment period.
What are some of those first time offerings?
So for high school students, they can take PE, they can take communications, wellness, psychology, sociology. And then most of the other courses that we offer are core classes that are credit recovery.
How is staffing looking for summer school?
We do look like we're in a good place this year.
All right, I didn't hear you. I can't hear if you don't use a microphone, right?
Any other questions? I look forward to coming back to you in June and July with some pictures of the things that kids have done. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tarvin. And item eight point ten, our student representatives report.
Good evening, Word of Education. Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox. If you don't know, this is my last week in school. I'm a class of twenty twenty thirteen. Thank you. Before I get on to what I'm about to talk about, I just want to say thank you. I've been doing these for a little over a year. I think the first one I did was in March of last year. So I just want to say thank you for giving me this space to talk about how I feel about my education and how I feel in my school, because I feel like it's really important to have student voice. And I'm glad that you gave me that voice and I'm very, very appreciative of that. In, in general, yes. Okay, I'm going to try to move quickly. I have a lot on my list. But just to start off, I know you guys talked about Into the Woods, the talent show, very, very good, very, very great. We're very happy. Some new things, we have speech and debate national qualifiers on the Raytown side. I know you heard about the South ones, but we have some recent ones. So the speech and debate national qualifiers are me, Amaia Morgan. So she heckin' up. Sean Hewland, Nia Vargas and Billy Bettis will be competing in World Schools Debate, which we're all on like the same team. And they were taking two supplemental computers, which is Chastner near and Rego Gross. And we are very, very happy to go. We'll go June tenth through the seventeenth in Phoenix, Arizona. We'll be competing. So we're very, very excited to go. And then also, if you're not a fashion person, you should be because the entire KC Metro is talking about Raytown Prom. And we cleared everybody. And if you don't know what clear means, go hit Urban Dictionary, but everybody's talking about us in a good way. So I just want to say you should be very, very proud of your Raytown juniors and seniors because we ate them up. Anyways.
Was ate them up? Is that to the, about the caterer for the prom? You said?
Let's not talk about that.
Urban Dictionary.
Urban Dictionary. Go ahead. And then also recently, we have had a meeting. We usually have meetings with Dr. Martin Knox as a group in our student council with South. And we had talked about some things that maybe we should continue working on in our school specifically, and I just want to share that out. Some key points that we talked about is just like school culture in terms of like admin and students don't really match and it creates a lot of friction between how the school is run. And I also think we have such a mindset on focusing on discipline that we've kind of forgotten everything else. And the discipline is very, very noticeable in Raytown High from a student standpoint of like, it feels like sometimes a student may only see their principal or their assistant principal in some way if they're getting in trouble and not in a positive light and the slightest. So it's like, it's getting to a point where it's really, really noticeable and it doesn't feel okay. And so that's something that we're looking at. And then we're also just looking at like, I think in our school, we have a really lack of collaborative space as well. So I think that is something that can also help out the discipline aspect is just having more collaborative space, having space where teachers and staff feel on par with school culture as the students do and feeling like we're in the same space exists, existing in the same reality in the way. But how do you feel? Oh, let me introduce him. Sorry. Hello. This is Aiden. The last girl that I brought last month was Alazza Soria. They are both candidates for president. We don't know who president is for next year yet, so I just brought both of them.
Okay, going off of Amaia's point of the how like discipline is so normalized in Raytown High School. ISS is a very big problem at Raytown High School and mostly for reasons that I don't feel should be that like aggressive. Like there was this one kid that I knew in my geology class, he got eight days ISS for being late to class because of the issues with like hall freezes and stuff. And I feel like that just shows like that isn't fixing the problem. That's only worsening it because just giving kids discipline for not being in class isn't going to make them want to go anyways. And especially giving them that long of a time, like I don't know how often he had ISS before. I don't know what other problems he had at the school, if he had any, but I feel like that is a very big unreasonable punishment for being late to class. I think especially because it like it gets in the way of like, there was this one time I was late to class and I had to attend a morning detention. So I didn't have to attend ISS and like for me, I don't want that on my record, but the majority of the school isn't going to go. No parent is going to drive them up to the school that early in the morning. No one is going to show up for that. So it's like you are basically, this is your only option is getting ISS because we don't really offer that many options to get out of it.
And I would also like to say like, the way I feel like is recognizable within students is we realize that there was a room designated for ISS on the first floor and it got moved down to our auxiliary gym because there were too many kids in ISS. And I just feel like that says enough as is, but I also feel like when it comes to that, it feels like admin and when it comes to like school culture and positivity, they only care about discipline and they don't care about the good things going on in the school and they're focusing on ISS, OSS, a hall freeze, detentions, like it's like
Taking away our phones.
Yeah, what, what, in what aspect are we cared about when we're doing good things? We're only looked at when we're doing bad things. And again, going back to the point, some of these kids only see their principals when they've done something bad. They're not seeing their principals after like a good moment or something like that, or just seeing them simply to talk to them. And that's what I think we really just got to work on like, obviously sending kids to ISS is not going to solve the problem of kids going to class. Like we need to find other methods to have the school culture be uplifted and also just like discipline is important, yes. But how can we make it to a way where students feel comfortable and safe in their school environments is, I feel the most important aspect I've taken out of this entire year. But yes, also kind of a weird question. Can I take a picture with you guys since my last meeting? Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? You said you over the student council or you guys are part of the student council?
I am currently, but I'm, since I'm graduating, I'm moving out of over student council.
So has the student council ever met with administration or teachers to address those concerns and try to work together? Because you guys know a lot more about behavior, student behavior, because you are students. You have been late before or whatever the case is. Have you ever met with administration or tried to talk to them about how it makes you feel or the inequity or the imbalance with disciplinary actions?
Well, I've had conversations with admin and it's more been on of like a fault of like, what are you as student council doing? Not as what we can do together and move forward in this space, but what can you do as student council? You're like, I'm, I'm not going to go into that, but and an aspect where it's like you need to do better and not we need to do better, if that makes sense, not we need to work together and do what we need to do. Because it's, I do understand that student council is a very important part of like school culture and things like that. But it's been forced on to us in a sense where it doesn't feel like we're having fun anymore. And so I've, I have tried to have those conversations with admin, but it ends up in a dead road. So I just, I decided to stop. I'm going to be honest.
We're going to miss you. I'm very proud of the work you've done this year. I think. You are the only person who can say as many words as Dr. Penelope and say. I, yeah, when we, when we started this and we envisioned having this kind of thing, I would say you've exceeded our expectations. And I don't know if you get elected and you're going to fill, you got big shoes to fill.
I do, I do very much.
So remind us one more time what your plans are after school.
Gladly. I'll be attending the University of Missouri and double majoring in journalism and film.
Thank you. Thank you for all the great reports that you've given us this year.
So Amaia, do you have any plans to come back to Raytown? And
You can ask me that question like five years. I don't really know.
We would love for you to come back to Raytown.
We'll see you.
We will.
Pay it back in your community. You'll be, you could be the president of the United States.
Okay, Amaia, I want to also
Too late.
Thank you. Commend, commend you as well in serving in this role. You, you've done a good service for your students at Raytown High.
Thank you.
You as well. I, I think what we, what Rick was saying about what we envisioned with the having student representation, definitely that is probably some of the most important things we hear. And so, and that's, and that is what I know is And so, uh, and that's, and that is what, uh, I know is a war we want to, we desire. To, to hear the student voice and to know. You know, us working together to improve. And like, it'd be just build community. And so, uh. I look because of the change, because of what you've done, I think you're going to recognize a lot of change that occurs in that five years. And so I'll see you then.
Get me back to cut it off because I'm about to cry.
Want to say something because you're also, because I really liked when you guys came on, one of the things that I was hoping for was. I, you gave us a good report, but I was looking for those things that. Oh, we know about, but we don't want to talk about. And so tonight you spoke about some things that I felt were very, very important. I love to hear the, the perspective of a student in a matter. Because I, as it's been stated, you got firsthand knowledge on it, whereas we're handed on a secondhand basis. But I really appreciate you sharing because I was looking at the report. Of our in-school suspension and they have tremendously jumped so high. And I was glad to hear you mention about the fact that the in-school suspension and the fact that we would suspend a kid from. Knowledge and put him into an isolation type environment. For eight days because that student was late is horrible. It is horrible. That has an injustice to the child. And so I appreciate you sharing that because we need to do better. We want to mold kids and, and develop kids and we're proud of you, but we'd like to have more than just you. To be proud of, we'd want to see all of our student base as many as possible. Achieve as much as they can in life. So I thank you for sharing that tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Listen, Maya, if I could just say one more thing about. When I was. At front of the board, I'm the newest board member and I actually got voted on by the board. I mentioned you. Uh, I mentioned your passion and the way you come in here and you assert yourself. And I want to pay you your flowers while you are here. This is your last meeting. Um, I'm a very passionate person as well, like you. Uh, I don't quite have the courage that you have. Uh, but you said something that really resonated to me in my heart and I want to talk to my wife about it. And. I champion for you and for kids like you. I'm for higher learning, higher education, build a community, all the things that you want to do. And I want you to know. She said something that was very, 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 very dear to my heart. Please come back to Raytown. We need you. We need people like you. We need people like-minded like you. To come back. And sorry, Raytown needs more people like you. Raytown High School need people more like you. So I really want to pay you your flowers. You are tremendous.
Thank you. Are we good for that picture?
You want me to do this?
You want to do it now? You want to do it at the end of the meeting? That's what we do?
Why don't they stand right here? We'll stand up behind them, baby. You'll stand behind.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I like.
Hey, we're not, we're not.
He wants symmetric.
Aiden Tochi and Amaya, before you leave. And so let me just add. Just add a little to what you all have echoed, uh, so much here this evening. There's nothing like sitting with our young leaders. Uh, on a monthly basis, just to hear the dialogue and the conversation. And I think Amaya said it best and they know that that resonates with me. There's nothing more important than serving the customers that we're responsible for and our children are our customers. And I just want to publicly thank you, uh, for always being honest, sometimes brutally honest. And every time they leave, the work continues. So I just wanted to commend you all. Aiden, I look forward to working with you. Uh, as they fly off to bigger and better things, it's going to be you and I, Aiden. And so, uh, just thank you. Thank you for being who you are and continue to be the leaders that you are. Just thank you. And while we come to the close of the report of the superintendent, I'd be remiss if I did not today. Uh, recognize important people throughout our district and throughout our nation who take on the responsibility. Of empowering those young people who sat in front of us. Last week, we celebrated our superheroes, which are our food service workers. We celebrated assistant principals, we celebrated principals. We've celebrated nurses today. Uh, but this week is teacher appreciation week and I want you to take a moment to think about that teacher that inspired you the most. And I guarantee you that every thought that you have. Has nothing to do with the content that they know and the way in which they delivered it, but instead it was about the way in which they made you feel. And so when we sit here and we listen to the voices of our youngsters, I want you to find a teacher. Whether in your building, in the community, just to say thank you. The work that they do, uh, you can't even imagine. Uh, but again, as a teacher by heart, always and forever, I just wanted to publicly say thank you to our educators. And hashtag thank the teacher. Uh, please make sure you take the time to do that because they work so hard. Uh, to make sure our children are educated. Um, and so that concludes the report of the superintendent. Would you like for me to go ahead and transition to presentations and recognitions? Or would you like to do that, sir chair? Okay.
And recognitions.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Burton, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening, we are recognizing two students who are rays of hope in our district. Mariah Turner is a published author and DeTravion Wallace placed first in the state. Speech and debate tournament in informative speaking, and we have a video to learn more about these two amazing students.
My name is Toni Davis, the proud principal of Raytown South Middle School. And I would like to let everyone know that our honorary for a ray of hope at Ray South Middle School is Mariah Turner. One of our eighth grade students who is absolutely amazing, involved in and out of school. Uh, things that I very much appreciate about Mariah, she is a ray of hope because she is proud of her school. She takes pride in herself and her work. Um, she's a student who loves English and history. She has a passion for writing. She is our student council president this year. She's also a part of our scholar bowl team. And our track and field team. So Mariah Turner is definitely someone we'd like to say is a ray of hope.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mariah Turner. I go to Raytown South Middle School. I'm thirteen years old and I'm in the eighth grade. So about a year ago, I had a vision with my mother that I wanted to write a book. And I was lucky enough to find someone, uh, to illustrate my book who also came in the same background as me. Who also had a brother with autism. And so we basically put two and two together and we created the. Living in Variety book. It took a lot of hours, a lot of hard work to put my skill of writing and her skill of. Drawing and artwork together because we don't live in the same district, so we had to. Schedule things that works out with my schedule and works out with her schedule. So that way we would be able to accomplish things in a more organized way. This book, Living in Variety, is about the differences that we live around in our community and how it's okay to be different. In fact, different is actually not good, but great. And this book means a lot to me because it's about my brother and her brother put together. And so it just holds a special place in my heart because it's about someone that I'm especially connected to. I just want everyone to know that it's okay to be different. You shouldn't hide your differences just because of the people around you. This is coming from someone who struggled of being okay with herself. Because I always felt that because I wasn't like everyone, that I thought I was always the single, I was always singled out. And I had to be okay with knowing like, hey, maybe I'm not the average black girl or whatever that means, but at least I am a black girl and I have to embrace. Who I truly am and know that I'm the way that God made me to be and I have to embrace that.
My name is Maureen Thomas and I am the speech and debate teacher here at Raytown South. So I have that class, but I am also their sponsor and coach and take them to tournaments. I think that Detroit Beyond Wallace is a ray of hope. Because they put effort and energy into giving the world a message. That the entire community needed and that they see and they are celebrating. This past weekend, our entire state celebrated Trey and their message as they won. The state competition for informative speaking. And this is so exciting for a number of reasons. First and foremost, in speech and debate. Students have the opportunity to really tell the world what they think. And Trey chose to talk about black hair. And there's some ignorance about black hair. There's some history about black hair in our racist past. And Trey handles all of it, talked about appropriation, talked about how. He, they've been treated with their hair and they. Teach people, but they also get a laugh out of them. They inspire people. And not only other students, but coaches from around the area have been talking about, who is this kid? What is this? This is awesome. And so Trey began to think about this moment last spring. We always start to at least talk about what's going to happen the year after. And as a junior, Trey came up with the idea to talk about black hair. Wrote the entire speech, beginning, middle and end, and wowed us in May of twenty twenty-two. But then they kept tweaking it, kept improving it. Taking our feedback and making some really impressive visual aids to help teach their audience. Trey has caught the attention of not only our school and our student body and this little speech and debate team. But Trey's caught the attention of. Local competitors and local coaches and they have people rooting them on. Um, across the state now and we'll get to root them on as we go to nationals in June.
I'm DeTravion Wallace. I was the Misha Informative Speaking Champion this year. It feels great. It's not surprising at all. I've been working towards it all year and my. Hard work is definitely reflected throughout my victories, but even with it, it's still very surprising to see that I made it this far. Um, basically I started it last year. I was really mad because going into debate is like very. It's a very prestigious activity and going into it, I had a lot of like people telling me like, oh my God, you're so cute, but your hair would be so much nicer, tidy. And I was like. This is making me mad and I'm going to make everybody I can hear about it. I basically started off talking about how I did magic when I was younger and eventually one of my friends told me that I should be. A clown instead of magician because I had a big nose and Afro. I eventually cut my hair and quit magic altogether and throughout my speech, I talked about how black hair has been mimicked while also demonized throughout all of America. And eventually I tapped back into it and talked about how over the years I realized that my hair is mine and. Every part of me is mine and it belongs to me. It's the opinions or the hatred of anybody else. Um, I go to nationals in June and. We'll see how it goes. I'm sure I'll do amazing and I can't wait to do amazing, but we just have to see.
So unfortunately, DeTravion cannot be here with us this evening, but Mariah Turner is here and I would ask her to come up. And we have one more recognition. We want to congratulate President Burton for completing his training for. Missouri School Boards Association.
I'd just like to say that's, uh, these kids are making me feel very inferior this evening. I, I can't believe you're only thirteen years, years old, so congratulations and just, just amazing.
All right, next we have our, uh, public comment period. Each person will be given five minutes except, so there's only two tonight, so. Uh, you can have five minutes to, uh, speak. I just want to remind you that. Uh, the speakers will not be permitted to participate in any gossip, make any defamatory comments. Or use abusive or vulgar language. First, I'd like to call Marie Tracy.
All right. Y'all online missed my intro. All right. Say, if there's only two speakers, that means I get fifteen minutes, right? All right. Um, I'm speaking about item thirteen point one. Specifically, I wanted to speak about the importance of both giving staff a step and putting money in the base. I'm speaking on behalf of Raytown NEA, a professional organization that represents about two hundred district employees. We always look forward to the Ray team presentation and the hard work that committee does to represent all staff. And we know the board does all you can to make Raytown a great place to work. I'll never forget the time the board even argued that Ray team needed to ask for more than. To let staff know that they were valued. The way our salary charts work, I know a few of you are newer, is that educators move to the right. On the salary chart when they gain more education and they move upward when the board provides a step. While the district states that steps do not equal years of experience, we find that when a step is not provided, that leads to pay inequities among staff. The reason for this is that when teachers are hired into the district, they are given steps equal to their years of experience. So if a teacher is hired with five years of experience, they're started on step six for their sixth year. However, if a teacher has been loyal to Raytown those same five years, they may be on step two or three if the board has not provided a step each year. We have teachers who are already five years behind on steps due to past salary freezes. And as those individuals get closer to retirement, which in the Missouri educator system is. And as those individuals get closer to retirement, which in the Missouri educator system is based on your income. Many find it difficult to stay in a district that does not monetarily value their experience and loyalty to our students who need them. Our students hugely benefit from staff experience and consistency. However, raises to the base are also extremely important. That helps us attract new teachers, that helps us try to address inflation. And yes, people understand that adding money to the base increases the dollar amounts throughout the whole entire chart. However, when teachers do not receive a step, Raytown NEA has observed that the resulting pay inequities can lead to resentment and burnout among the loyal Raytown teachers who are paid less than people who transfer in, and this does not help our students. I would encourage the board to keep retention in mind and show loyal staff that they are valued by the district as you make tough decisions tonight. Retaining quality teachers is one of the best things we can do for our students. Raytown NEA strongly recommends providing both a step and a raise to the base whenever it is financially feasible, as well as addressing the existing staff pay inequities caused by past step freezes. Minimizing existing and preventing future pay inequities encourages staff retention, which benefits our students. Thank you for all you do.
Next five minutes, we'll have Carrie Plater.
Hi, I said, oh, great. This. Hold it the whole time? No, there we go. Okay. Good evening. My name is Carrie Plater and I'm speaking on agenda item 13 point run, the Ray Team recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Raytown NEA about the importance of supporting step restoration for long-term Raytown teachers. I will be using my story as an example, but my story is the same for many of our long-term Raytown teachers. I've been working as a fax teacher at Raytown South High School for 17 years. In fact, I've had several board members' kids. However, I'm paid at step 12 due to salary freezes early on in my career. A lack of step restoration has created large pay inequities in our district. These inequities have resulted in tension and resentment amongst staff. Long-term Raytown employees are paid less than new hire teachers to the district. New hires that the long-term staff are asked to help acclimate to the district. New hires, we are asked to train. The practice of giving new hires all their steps and treating steps as years' experience when hiring into the district, but telling long-term employees that steps do not equal years' experience has made long-term Raytown teachers believe that years' experience outside the district are more valuable than years in Raytown. I know this is not the case. My longevity in Raytown is an immense benefit to this district. I know families. I know school history. I know students. These are things that cannot be replicated by a person who is new to the district. I love working at Raytown South High School. It has been my home. A place I spent countless hours, made countless connections and hopefully made a long-lasting impression and impact. I want my last day teaching to be in room 114 at South High. However, at some point, I must look at the fact that I would only make more money in surrounding districts because they would give me all my steps. Every year, I have watched the number of long-term teachers to the district diminish. We can't deny that teacher steps are a factor when long-term Raytown teachers leave, especially since our retirement is directly based on the income in Missouri, on our income in Missouri. We're facing a major teacher shortage and it will get worse. At this point, we are all hiring from the same pool because there are not new teachers joining the field. I was called by a neighboring district about an opening, even though I applied for no jobs this year. I know that I am not the only person who had that happen. We must do all we can to keep good teachers in Raytown. And one of the most important things we can do is restore steps to our long-term teachers. It will show the district's commitment to them and their work in Raytown. If all the long-term Raytown teacher, teachers leave, who will be left to show the new hires the ropes? I beg the board to support Ray Team's recommendation to give back a long overdue step to long-term employees. Additionally, I hope the board will direct Ray Team to create a plan to finish restoring steps and create plans to create a climate of longevity in our district so people want to stay here. Raytown NEA supports Ray Team's three recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year. And we ask the board to also support those recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you both for your comments. Next, we'll have board committee reports. And I will be taking time to assign the new, new committee for our new board members. And as all of board members, probably will solidify that before the next board meeting. Also, we plan to have board retreat on June 10th. And more emails and information will be coming out for that. That will be a Friday dinner and then sessions on Saturday. Any committee reports? Any other committee?
Yes. Uh, the curriculum and professional development committee convened today. Um, and we discussed four different areas. We talked about an equity council, which is a committee comprised of district staff at all levels, about 100. And that committee is forming so that they can implement a three-year plan that utilizes tiers one to three to provide a structure to meet the needs of all learners so they can meet proficiency. And so the initial focus is going to be on numeracy and literacy. And so one of the goals is to establish a culture of collective responsibility. Uh, with the tier one structures, uh, that ensures that every student receives the essential, it's essential, excuse me, on learning to have their needs met. And then each tier becomes more progressive with, with the interventions that are needed. They met in April and some of the discussion in the April meeting was to have book studies. Uh, they created an essential goals document, which they'll be mapping their plan from. And then there were also conversations around how to deliver effective tier two instruction. Uh, tier three will be more of the targeted focus in 2024, 2025. And that will address the needs of students that are well below the grade level. Again, ensuring that they also have high-quality instruction so that their needs are met. Uh, point two that we discussed was the district leadership retreat. Uh, this would be something new where those building leadership teams will all meet to create, uh, the school improvement plan with the focus on four different areas, academic achievement, attendance, uh, looking at our trauma smart model and training and interventions and then improving behaviors. And so every school will be committed to this plan, uh, which is also, uh, at this leadership retreat. Uh, the, they're going to have discussion of that strategic plan work. Um, the leadership teams will begin sharing out at board meetings each month about the growth in all of those four areas that I just named. And this ensures intentionality and accountability. And let's see, we also have teacher teams that will be sharing out best practices around those four areas to show growth. Uh, there is a discussion on different types of goals, wildly important goals. And so these are really targeted focused goals where teachers and principals can have discussions looking at unit by unit, skill by skill, student by student. And then we discuss point three, professional learning opportunities this summer. Uh, using solution tree for that professional development where leaders, teachers and people can convene over multiple days, uh, to help support the implementation of our tiered systems of support. And these individuals will have an opportunity to share their learning when they convene to the building in August and throughout the year. And then the last item was, uh, looking at new teacher support, um, in August 2023. And so feedback was taken from staff to have, uh, some changes that are made to allow for more flexibility uh, for teachers, for instance, to acclimate more with the technology, providing a longer time built in to be able to do those things. Uh, shifting the diversity and cultural competency, training and making that earlier, um, during day one of that week that they come back. Uh, providing mentors who help support new teachers with really focused, uh, intentional training to support those needs of the new teachers. And then there were some other changes that were made to allow for, uh, grade levels to convene in smaller groupings uh, for that intentional support. And I think, did I miss something? Well, since we hasn't, haven't had a report in a while, I thought just to give you more detail than less.
Next, in new business, we have, uh, policy, the doctor was a board policy.
Policy, ACIC, equity and inclusion, DDD, attendance, DDDH, couple participations of four teams, IBCD virtual courses, IBCBA, full-time, mo-cap, virtual, private public participations, four meetings. Virtual courses, JCA, eligibility to enroll and PC community involvement in the city.
Motion made and seconded. Next, in new business, we have the Ray Team 23-24 recommendations.
Uh, that was obviously some NEA and representatives from MST as well. So that's, that's who I'm kind of representing tonight. So good evening, uh, Dr. Martin Knox, uh, President Burton, members of the board. I believe I heard, uh, we have the vice president and just Mr. Watson. Right? Okay. Excellent. Okay. Very good. Um, yeah, it's definitely my pleasure to represent NEA as a member of Ray Team. I believe there's a presentation that we can kind of see. I'm breaking down. Oh, can you guys see the, the presentation? Okay, excellent. So, um, breaking down the membership, um, I am an NEA representative on Ray Team. And then I have two other representatives that serve with me, Mary and Megan. So NEA has three reps and then MST has three reps as well, Amy, Suzie and Brian. Uh, we all represent, um, various buildings throughout the district, elementary art, library, um, early childhood, high school, Herndon Career Center. So we all come from wide, varied backgrounds, representing all of our, you know, members. Um, then there's classified members. We have Matt, Karen, Regina, Jamison and Melissa. They all represent like areas of technology, cafeteria, admin, exec, building and ground, nurses. And then administrative members are Carl, uh, who's our HR representative, former principal, Tony Davis, uh, South Middle Principal, Terry Gibson Finance. And Julie Schmidly is a little blue. So, um, all of these members have a deep personal investment, not just as employees, but many people have graduated from Raytown. Um, they have kids that have went to Raytown. That's, that's me included. My daughter attends the building I'm at. So it's not just about, um, representing, you know, our employment. It's representing our investment in the district. The mission of Ray Team is definitely a collaborative, uh, team working together for consensus to improve the quality of the workplace. Recommend an affordable and competitive compensation package for all employees of, of Raytown. Um, I've been on the team for about four years now, I believe. Um, I came in as, as a member was leaving the district and then I, I, I came into the group and learned the ropes a little bit. And over the years, it's gotten better and better. I feel like the way that we collaborate, the way that we problem solve is probably at the top of the, the level. It's just a really, um, you hear a lot of perspectives and that's where this process comes in, into play. So, um, Ray Team's schedule and method of gathering information, we meet monthly beginning in September. Uh, we develop a survey each year that's sent out to district employees. This year's survey, we gathered 833 responses. Uh, the results guide our work for that year. Um, we're anticipating as we get into buildings in the upcoming year, we're going to ramp up the number of people that respond to those surveys. Over time, when we weren't able to, to get into buildings, we feel the engagement kind of went down. And then when COVID was going on, there was a lot of survey fatigue people. So we're, we're looking at getting a lot more responses in the future. Um, we receive monthly updates from finance and HR. Uh, Ray Team members share feedback and concerns from buildings and departments they represent. That's kind of a new feature to the team this year was, um, Carl came in as the HR representative. And basically he's been on, on Ray Team for many years and he wanted to hear back from people. And we do it kind of around the horn and we get a lot of feedback and all of our members, you know, kind of get a little bit of the pulse of what's going on. So that's been really helpful. Um, we regularly invite district leaders and department heads to meetings and discuss concerns and suggestions. Um, I actually just had something hatch in my head about like hearing, hearing those student council reps tonight. I'm like, Ray Team would probably in the future, we might talk about getting, getting those reps in there and talking about how we could maybe present a proposal. Um, that is just me flying off the cuff with that, but we have had Dr. Martin Knox in here. And, and I'm actually dressed up as a result of hearing something that she said in the meeting about her speaking so passionately about, about teachers in, in, in dress and looking sharp. And it was in regard to jeans and she, she collect, she basically compromised on that matter. I like people looking sharp and being dressed up, but I also respect the idea that, um, teachers, you know, feel morale is good to have jeans. So lots of constructive talk comes out of having people in. Dr. Griner's come in, talked about curriculum instruction, partnerships that we can have to get things, uh, that we need to implement, feeling better for everyone involved. A lot of partnership. Um, we've had C-Biz came in and talked about the health insurance process, about how, how the district seeks to, to get all of that. Um, and now I'm going to hand it over to the resident, um, doctor of historian of Ray Team and he's going to lay it out for us.
Good evening. I'm Brian Wise. I've been teaching over at Herndon Career Center for 29 years. It's my 29th year. I've been on Ray Team for 14 years. A lot of new faces, a lot of familiar faces. Um, some of you don't know me, but a lot of you do. Uh, when we gather survey information, we, we take the data from that and we rank it by what's most important and what we get as far as feedback. We do look at qualitative and, and quantitative data, uh, when we do the surveys. This year, the top things were salary increase, step restoration, affordable benefits, jeans days, revise the PBD policy and protected plan time. So from that, we came to our recommendations. And we, uh, our recommendations are to increase the personal business days from four days per school year to five days. We also would like to recommend we update staff conduct, dress code, uh, GBCB. We also would like to recommend we update staff conduct, dress code, GBCB, AP one, number eight to allow for facial piercings. We also have some salary recommendations, a step to every salary schedule. A three percent increase to the base, which is twelve hundred on the teacher salary schedule. And a one-step restoration for the school year twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve employees. With continuous employment, Ray Town School District could have not moved salary schedules since then. Part of the reason we came, this is a big proposal, a lot bigger than what we've become with the past. We have some, excuse me, some supporting rationale. There's historical narrative projections. Of reserve balances running less than fifteen percent. Mr. Moore, I think you get a test of that. You've talked about that before on open board. These projections are what we have used, always used in making salary recommendations. These rec, these recommendations are the 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 projections we're not able to realize. In other words, when we, if you look at nineteen. Our projected fund balance is going to be seven percent and the actual fund balance is eighteen percent. So that's kind of why we went a little harder than what we normally do. The the current landscape of four-day work weeks and high salary increases in the surrounding districts. We need to be as competitive as possible as we can be and still be fiscally responsible. We are concerned with with teachers leaving. In conclusion, Ray Team is committed to advocating for competitive salaries and benefits for all employees. Ray Team acknowledges and appreciates the efforts the board has taken to renew staff morale and community pride in our school district. Ray Team acknowledges and appreciates the difficult decisions the board has called upon to make as well as the time it takes to deliberate for those decisions. Y'all give up a lot of personal time. We understand that. Ray Team shares the same goal with the Board of Education to attract and retain a quality staff for Ray Town, Ray Town Quality Schools. Anybody got any questions? Pardon me.
The Salisbury, the facial piercing, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Amy Low Smith, a member of Ray Team. The facial piercing would be including nose ring, eyebrow, and lip. So we already had earrings, we're already board approved. It would be other facial piercings other than your ear. Well, do we not want, does it affect your teaching? I mean, so do we want to not have a candidate be a teacher because of something like that when we don't want to miss out on a great teacher?
The the way the the policy is written, Ms. Salisbury, is that right now, if if a person has a nose piercing, very small one, they can be written up by admin. And so that's what we're trying to eliminate is allowing the piercings. If we don't put a change to the language where it allows piercings, then people that have a lip ring or a nose ring or some type of piercing like that. That's still considered what we consider appropriate, they can be written up.
I'm not used to the microphone. I thought I had a good voice, but anyway. So to me. That lowers your standard. It's just like you telling me, why can't I have changed the policy to come in my pajamas some days? I mean, when you think about it. Where is the boundary? Where do you draw the line at?
Well, I know that our superintendent would allow that for sure.
No, it's not about her.
No, I know.
Where do you draw the line at to say what can and cannot be worn to school? You're a professional.
I understand that. And we're in a, we're at a point now where we have a lot of younger people that I'm not even gonna, I mean.
Train the young people.
Pardon?
You need to train them.
And and that's part of it as well.
And they follow that standard.
Right.
If we let everything, this is what's going on in our world today. Everything is is good for anything and everything and everybody.
There's something else I'd like to add to that. So we're talking about culturally accepting other people. In other cultures, face piercing is definitely part of their culture. So I've grown up with a lot of friends who are from cultures that nose piercing is very common. Every member of their family would have it. So I don't feel like we're lowering our standards when we're also accepting other people's cultures. And that's something that we've sworn that we're going to do here in this district. Is be accepting to other cultures. So maybe that's part of their culture or 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 something like that that we don't want to discount.
Well, I'm totally at loss for that one. Not really, man.
All right, Mr. President.
Can I ask if that's, are the students allowed to do that?
Yes.
Have piercings all over like that?
Yeah, but one, I have a young lady that currently has three nerve piercings and a lip piercing. And she's still well.
I would, I would be interested in seeing, I mean, you stating that there's. Is is, I would be interested in seeing the data behind. Are we losing teachers because of facial piercings or not having or not having the opportunity to hire a person? That would be, I'd be, I'm not saying it's not true.
Right.
I'm just saying I'd be interested in seeing something along those lines that that is something that. I mean, when we're talking about recommendation. I just think there's, there's a lot more things that's weighing in importance, but I do understand what you're saying. I mean, it's kind of like the same thing as when Amaya came up and talked about. What's going on as far as ISS, it's the same, and a teacher getting written up and this, and then the inequities of. Students having piercings and teachers not. But at the same time. Students are being taught, students are being, being straight about being professional. What and what we're defining as professional.
Correct. And that's why we have a dress code.
As adamant about it, but I I would like to see the evidence of what you're saying.
We're just trying to prevent people being written up that are already currently employed.
So that that's.
That's, that's, that's the bottom line.
That's a, that's something that's increasing and that's a problem.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be a problem. That's, that's, that's part of what we do is look at things can be a potential problem. So we want to eliminate that problem before it becomes a problem.
Understand that I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not. I'm just saying I would be interested in seeing how big of a problem that is.
Correct.
Just like I am going to see how how big of a problem it is for ISS for is being like. Like, that's something I would.
Sure.
Anyway, I did have a question though.
Sure.
You put up the projections for past years.
Yes.
Of our reserve bounce. I would like to ask you, what was the raise on nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one? In regards to the, what was projected, because I don't believe that whatever was projected. I don't believe it affected what we did at the board.
Right.
And so that means that's a mute point. And in what you're saying, because the projections were never what we use to decide. Teachers getting raises or not.
Hmm, I think that part of it has been based on that in the past.
That's why I want to know, because what, the way I remember it. Is that the board approved something more than what Ray Team.
You're absolutely right. Yep, yep.
And so even despite the projections.
Right.
What I'm saying is the projections were such, but it was not a, the decision didn't, those projections didn't affect the decisions.
Right. And and by the time we came to that meeting, we already knew that those projections were incorrect. And that's why, guys, that's why y'all went and did the extra. I remember that.
But we always, well, we always. I personally don't remember projections below twenty percent because I've always tried to hold the standard. But I'm I'm asking, I'm not asking what the projections were, because those projections never mattered.
Right.
Because we gave the raises.
But that's, but that's part of what we based our recommendations to the board on.
Okay.
Is based on those projections. And so instead of asking for more.
You didn't ask as much.
Right, right.
Of the projection.
Right. Because of projections, we didn't, we didn't push for more.
And that's what, so that's what you're not doing now? Not yet. So you're saying. I'm at, so right now, the recommendation that you guys are making is not based on the projections being made.
It's pushing, it would push the projections. In other words, if if we were, if we were to look at five years down the road and everything's flatlined, then it would look bad, but that's what they've always done. But we're asking for more than we nor, we're normally would based on the projections that we've saw and and we believe. In our financial.
You do know.
Professional.
I mean, I know you realize that we also have someone different making.
Correct. Correct.
And that does make a difference.
And I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we all got a bomb laid in our lap last year. And they, and they.
And we, yeah, we really did.
With the impression that this, this, the next three years, we might be facing freezes again, which I would say. One thing I've said in my heart that we would never do that.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm just one board member, but I will fight for never to do that again.
Right.
And so. What I'm saying is, is that if you say the projections, oh, it affected you, I I get that.
Right.
Okay. But at the same time, the board, it affected you, but the board also gave more than what you asked for.
But we've also walked out of this meeting and had board members ask us why we didn't ask for more.
Correct.
Multiple times.
That's, that's, that was one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I'm saying is, is that when you, when the projections was never affected the decision that was being made. Because we gave more than what you asked.
One, yeah, one time. Mr. Moore.
Well, first of all, I want to back up a little bit. Does Ray Team still use a consensus model to to reach your, your conclusions? Okay, that's good to know. I just wasn't sure if you still use a consensus model. So your guys are pretty much in consensus for all five of these recommendations.
Absolutely, we are.
I'm still guessing, though, that, that your last three are more more important to you than the first two. And especially the ones regarding the the piercings.
Sure.
Am I correct in saying that?
Oh, yeah.
All right. So we'll have more discussion about this, but I would say just on the projections. The projections did affect what we did and and they did affect what they requested. Maybe not the year where we gave more. But every year, Ray Team is given what the projected balances are, just like the board is. And there, and then they have a discussion, come to a consensus, okay, based on the projection of the fund balance can end up being this. This is what we think is reasonable to ask from the board.
Right. And we've done that since two thousand nine.
First time you've thrown this back in our face, which I don't blame you, because it's valid. You're saying that the projections have always varied widely. So you're comfortable in asking for a three percent to the base and one step.
And we feel like we have to to retain the people we've got.
Well, I'll just speak, speak to myself and, and you know, I got, I've always been honest with you guys. I'm going to support the three percent to the base and the step, but I'm not going to support the the restoration step right now. I think it, your, your speech made me think about some things that we could look at and made me be more open to it. But the, we froze those way back twelve years ago because we were, we had a problem. We needed to freeze it. There was never any promise that those steps were going to be restored. So I think that's why I'm not going to support that part of the recommendation at this time, but I'm more willing to look at it. Now than, than I was before.
So. If we look at, if we don't go by projections. And we look at the revenue. The revenue in the freeze years matches the revenue we currently have. And so. Given that. I don't think, one thing I I I really, I forget which one said it, might have been Miss Tracy or Miss Player. She gave all the reasons, but at the end she said when financially responsible. And so not based on projections. Not based on projections, based on what we know, the status, the state of our district. And the decline in several areas of our, of what we've been dealing with. I, I'd have a hard time supporting the recommendation this year.
I'm sorry to hear that, but I, but I'm like you.
I'm, I'm just.
Yep.
And I've never not done that.
Right.
I'm saying, given where the, what's been revealed, I do believe those projections are wrong, but that that person is no longer here.
Right.
And I do, and I think that's slightly something we should have looked at because those projections were long, wrong for so long.
But historically, we know that in bad times, economic times, that that's when our enrollment grows, and I'm betting on that. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that's when we had.
Roman has grown.
Yep.
I think we can revisit that.
Yep.
But we haven't.
I live here still. And I, I there, in my neighborhood, I've seen there's four new houses getting ready to be put back on the market. So I'm hopeful.
As, as am I. But what I'm saying is that this, this is the first year of six. That we've experienced any sort of growth in any area. And.
As long as the economy stays bad, we'll keep growing. I know it's a horrible thing to say, but that's the way this district is.
Well, that's, I just, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I mean, I can't, I, I would like to have more understanding on the facial piercing. Puniti, punitiveness that people experience because their face, they have an earring in their eyebrow or earring in their nose. I'd like to understand how many people are affected by that policy. Do you know, Brian?
I, I don't have any idea.
Is it more of a, and I don't envy either our side. I don't envy either one of the decision maker. We have to make the decisions, because this is a difficult thing to discuss. In regards to the facial piercings and the ability to be, I mean, to be allowed to have those things. I personally don't see anything wrong with it. I mean, it's just, it's who we are, it's how we express ourselves, but there's nothing wrong with that. I would like to see what are the punitive things, not that it dictates what I think, but it's just like, are people being written up for something like that when the times and the climate have changed? I know we influence our younger people, our younger people also influence us. And and style and dress and cultural competency and culture, you know, appropriation and how those things are looked at have changed. And so I don't see anything wrong with that. And I'm learning a lot and I appreciate the members who have reached out to me via email to kind of get me up to speed when it comes to the steps and the percentages. And how it, how it has run in our district historically, when it was freezes. And what happened in those, in those times, you know, and and having to make up for it. On the other hand, having to look at where we are as a district financially and our responsibilities to be good stewards with where we are and to fully understand. The state of our district financially and compare to, you know, when the, when the economy is bad and enrollment do, does go up. Well, in six years, we've had one year of enrollment go up. As Director of REAP, I know that very well. I know that very well, because it 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 affects and impacts the people we we serve. And so when you're looking at it from the standpoint of, really comes down to what we can afford, what we can really afford to do as a district. With with staying financially responsible to, you know, our, our, our stakeholders and our children. To make sure that other things don't impact. Their ability to to get the resources and things on top of wanting to retain our quality teachers who are dedicated to the district. Who have put in time, who have, who have sacrificed to make sure that they have a salary and they know that they are appreciated. So that's personal for me. That's, that's something that, again, I'm learning and I want to continue to to stay on that path of learning. So that way we can create a plan. And and I'm big on the fact that we have a new regime, we have new leadership, we have new administrators and who I know for a fact. Know what they're talking about. You just want to be transparent. They know what they're talking about. Because when you see things in the past, you see things that should have been done and weren't done, you can't go back and necessarily fix them all. But you can start from now and you can make that plan together. As I, I didn't know about the, the, the meetings for a say, I probably would have, well, we showed up. But we could create that plan collectively, because I want, I don't want it to be us and y'all. I don't want, I don't want it to be personal. I want it to be. How can we create the plan that best works for everybody? I don't want, I don't want it to be personal. I want it to be, how can we create the plan that best works for everybody, most importantly, our students? And, and most importantly, secondly to that, as, as our, our teachers and, and uh how they feel and be able to retain quality teachers. I'm sorry.
That's great.
Do you want to answer to this Salbury's question? Okay. So one of the things I think that we, we didn't exactly cover earlier was that Ray team asks two questions. What are the things we can do for you um as a district, teachers, staff? Um, you know, all staff, what are the things we can do for you to make your quality of work life better? We have one whole group that is non-monetary. What are things we can do for you that don't cost the district any money? Because as we see, the, the money issue is, you know, is an issue. And then we also ask the questions, what do you want that costs money? So we have these two entities, right? So what, some of the things that we're asking for that don't cost the district any money, that could possibly make someone's quality of work life better. Is the facial piercing and the PBD days. So that means that instead of it's a sick day, it's a, it's a personal business day. So those are two things that cost nothing. The other thing we did was also add a jeans day, thank you, or dungarees, or however you want to. Address that one. So that's why we have these two things here and then the money issue. Because Ray team asks for those things very specifically. What can we do that doesn't cost the district money and then what is monetary?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. What's your name again?
Amy Low Smith.
And how long have you been with us?
Um, I've been in the position I'm at fourteen years. Before that, I was a long-term sub in the district for five. Both of my parents are alumni Hall of Fame and my husband's family is one of the founding families of Raytown. I've been here forever.
That's awesome. Thank you too. My next question is, as a, since you've been here, you have that, the long history. How are some of the things that we're, that, that we're discussing that have personally impacted you? Because we hear it as a collective, but I want to know how it, how it's impacted you. Has it impacted your decision to stay in the district as long as you have to consider other options? Or how's it, how's it worked for you personally?
This is my last year. I've already put in my resignation and the board has accepted it. Um, the monetary issue is not, for me personally, I have a different financial situation than other people. It was not the issue for me. I left for other reasons. Um, I do not have facial piercing, so that's, you know, not for me. However, I do have a daughter in medical school. Who did attend Raytown schools and is now at Johns Hopkins University and has her nose pierced. She's a specialist in neurological implants to move your prosthetics. And because she has a nose ring, doesn't make her any less capable than anyone else to um do your implant or help create an implant for you. So that's me personally, because that's my child. Um, you know. Yes, I know older people may look at her a little different, but I tell you what, you want a bright kid who's doing something, nose ring or not, that's going to be a kid who's going to do it. So we need to look past those things, um, because people have talents that a nose ring or an eyebrow piercing has nothing to do with their ability.
Let me make myself clear. What I was saying was why were we bringing this before the board for? And I did not have the understanding that you had people that were being penalized for wearing earrings or whatever.
So we had, we had to bring it before the board because it's a board policy. So in order to change it, oh.
I understood that it was a policy, but what I was concerned, but I, we say yes. Do not uh penalize a person because they wear a nose ring or what have you. I just think that it's a standard. It has nothing to do with the character of the person. I'm not speaking about no one's character. I'm just speaking about the standard. When we uh lower our standards. That increases more and more before, before you know it. I mean, I'm just using it, it's a wild example. I mean, you say a nose piercing, first you have a little small earring, then next thing you have a big earring maybe. I don't know, but I just was curious. That was an issue. I didn't realize you were having people being penalized, so I am curious as to how many people are affected by such a policy as this.
I don't really have the number from the Ray team survey. Like I said, it was just something that Ray team brought to your attention because it is board policy and it was a non-monetary item that we thought could maybe um help somebody's quality of work life.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I would like the, the board to hear uh, you know, the board uh. Fires or boys one person, so we should probably hear from our superintendent on what she thinks of the recommendations and what, what she recommend or the administration.
I'm just taking it all in now. Um, so let me just say that the conversations we've engaged in are, are very sensitive and they're emotional. And I just need to reiterate uh what Miss Tracy has said and what the team has said. We work every day for our children, but more importantly, I work for you. Right? I work to make sure that our children have the best educators and the best support staff possible. While we have several recommendations that are on the table, um, one, I'm going to ask that we go back and revisit it. Because I'm not sure if it's a policy problem or if it's an issue that we need to address with leadership, and that would be the piercings. And I hope it doesn't get me in trouble because my grandmother was very angry with me, but we will talk about piercings and I don't have facial pierings, pier- piercings. But I have five earrings up both ears. And I started, one day she left me home from church. I should have gone to church. And she didn't realize until I was a senior in a high school that I was trying to put my name in my ear. Well, my name is Penelope, so I got to five and I thought the other ones were going to hurt, so I stopped. So that did not become a reality. But I will say to you, because of professional appearance, I don't wear all of my earrings. But let's have a conversation about the expectations in the appearance, and I'm not sure if that's a conversation with and for the board. But it is something that the team and I can go back and look at and evaluate. Because I do believe regardless as to whether it's a small stud or whether it's a big hoop or whether it's an earlobe, tire, whatever they're called, hanging from the ear. There has to be a professional appearance for it all, and I said that with a smile, but it's all in seriousness. Because as we stand in front of children to continue to model, sometimes we have to inspect what we expect. And so I think that that is a deeper conversation. While we come together all the time to meet, to discuss and resolve matters. I think this is one that we can sit down and have a conversation with, so I, I'm not looking for a recommendation for that right now. I think this is a leadership matter and an expectations matter, so I would like to have a deeper conversation regarding that. I do believe people need to be their individual selves, uh, but I also think that there is uh some parameters that need to be put in place with that. The next piece um that I would bring forward is the personal business days. We've had this conversation and while I meet with uh the teachers group, it has come up to me as well. Um, the personal business days, right now there are ten allocated days, six for six, six for six, four for personal business. And they were very upfront and, you know, honest with me to say, you know, I don't want to be untrustworthy uh or to. Put on a facade to say that I'm sick when I'm not, just so I can use my days. I support the five in five, five personal business, five sick. But again, that's just my recommendation moving forward. Um, I do support that, that ability to have our professionals have those five personal business days and those five sick days uh to be able to utilize when it's needed. But I also need to put on the table and to thank the board because whenever I come to the board to say, can we support our staff in certain ways? You have always been amenable to that, and I will just say, because we continue to face the financial challenges. For example, with the snow days, you didn't blink twice when I asked, could we allow them to not have to make up those three snow days? And so when we look at those factors, I'm not talking about neighboring districts, I can only focus on Raytown. Those are the small things that oftentimes we forget when we talk about what we do for our staff. And I do do for our staff, just to make sure you know we appreciate you. Those two snow, snow days that were called, you had no control over that, but I had the, the authority to make the decision to close schools. For the safety of our students and our staff, we closed schools. But I came to the board and I asked, would you forgive those two days of inclement weather and the one red snow day uh to celebrate our football team? So we don't have to make those three days up. So when we talk about compensation, those are things that I believe we need to take into consideration as well. When we move forward, and I'll just go back and play in my mind, I had officially said yes, I believe I had already signed my contract, maybe I hadn't. But I had attended a board meeting and the bomb that was dropped that day was. We're going to freeze salaries for the next three years and we're going to start closing schools. I could have done one or two things. Sit there and put my seatbelt on and begin to enjoy the ride or run out the door. I chose to be here to make sure we do what's best for our community and to do what's best for our children. And so it with intentionality, one of my goals is fiscal responsibility. And what I've said is we have to check adult behavior to make sure we balance it with our finances. But with intentionality, with finding someone who had that background to do the numeracy aspect of balancing our budget. We ta, I know Mr. Gibson gets tired of seeing my number show up on his phone. I'm not going to look at him because he's probably nodding. But I know he gets tired of me calling him to say, bring me back this set of numbers, bring this set of numbers, look at these sets of numbers. Let's talk about this. Where can we cut? Bring the, we did something a little different this year as well. Mr. Gibson met with everyone in the district who's responsible for a budget. And had a conversation with how we're spending those monies, because I do believe in investing in our people. I do believe in making sure compensation is what we can do in a level that does not send our district backwards. And so when I said to him, he said, meet with everybody? Everybody. And so he sat at the table with everyone bringing their budget and we allowed staff to bring forward recommendations and identified places where they could. Reduce their spending without having a major impact on our schools. So let me just say this again, closing schools. The other piece that hasn't happened is while our student enrollment has declined with about eight hundred students. That should have required major staffing cuts. We've not had a conversation about cutting staff. We have not had a conversation about cutting staff. So while it may not benefit some people in the pockets to keep them here, understand that when we make decisions, they're about people. They're about investing in people. And so I'm only giving you this background information because the only thing that, things that keep me up at night is the safety of staff and students and money. And when I used to teach grad classes and doctoral classes, I used to tell people the fastest way to get fired from any job is to do what? You mess up the money. And so we have to make sure that while we don't have a crystal ball moving forward with the financial piece of our district. We have to make these predictions about where we're going to go, where the revenue is going to come from. With the reduction in student enrollment, right now, DESI has been funding us based on our enrollment from twenty twenty. Prior to the pandemic, we've lost a lot of students and this is not a Raytown issue. This is a national issue. This is a phenomenon no one even predicted. We'd lost students, but DESI as well as many other state agencies have decided to continue to fund us based on our enrollment from twenty twenty. They're not doing it anymore. So now we have to balance out and figure out a way to make ends meet. We have to make sure that while we should not have to make decisions about the finances, sometimes we have to make decisions with finances first. So with that moving forward, we've not talked about cutting positions, we've not talked about closing schools. But if we make one mistake, that's going to have to be the next conversation because we're at bare bones. And again, let me replay that conversation. You're going to have to close schools and freeze salaries for three years. So at this point, with the work of Mr. Gibson, with the work of everybody coming together to make those hard decisions. I would propose to the board that we give our staff two percent to the base as an increase and one step. That would be my proposal. The other component with the restoration. We are, when I look at the budgetary lines, we are in a place financially where we were when that original budget cut or freeze took place. Again, we're forecasting where we could be next year. We're forecasting where we could be at the end of the year. Two percent keeps us okay. But one sneeze and we could be in a place where I'm again, let me remind you, closing schools and cutting staff. And again, we've not reduced that. And then the other factor that we need to take into consideration. The S R funds have already been allocated. They'll be exhausted. There are no more S R funds. And there were sixty seven, Dr. Calcara helped me out, so I don't want to publicly give the wrong number. How many positions did we purchase with S R funds? So sixty nine, so you're testing my math. So we purchased as a district sixty nine positions and I said to staff, I believe in our people, we hired people. I should not now turn around two years later, three years later and say, you're done, have a good day. Because I do believe the people that were hired are, was best for our children. So we're trying to maintain staffing, maintain building openings while also compensating our staff where I believe you should be and then some. So that's my proposal would be two percent to the base and one step. The restoration component, unless someone miraculously comes and gives us less than a million dollars, almost eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't see us, and I'm just going to be completely transparent, I don't see us being able to do that. I could do one or the other. I could give the two percent to base and a step, or I can do the eight hundred thousand dollars for the restoration. We can't do all three. But what I can promise you is the same phone calls I give Mr. Gibson, the same conversations we have about our revenue. They will be continuous and who's to say that next year at this time, we're not having a conversation where we can say, and this is just hyperbaric, right? Let's go ahead and do, no, I'm not going to say that because somebody will come back and play and say, she said we were. We could move forward in a different place, but right now, we need to make sure that the forecast that we have, we're in a good place. And I think we're in a good place because like I said, where we were last year. Three years of frozen steps and closing buildings and we're not there. Hopefully we will never be there. So again, making those adjustments and moving forward. So again, I would recommend to propose that the piercings conversation. Allow me with staff to have that dialogue with Ray team and to continue to have that conversation. The restoration, we can't afford that right now. It's a one or the other. The other proposal is two percent to the base, one step. And to continue to revisit our salaries and our staff and where we are. Um, and I think I got them all because I have your notes everywhere, my notes everywhere. So the personal business days is the other one, and I'm in agreement with giving the five personal in the five sick days. Those are the proposals or the thinking where I am at this particular point in time.
Be permitted to make a follow-up?
No, not after I speak. No, go ahead.
No, no, no. Um, I just heard several things from a lot of board members and, and from you talking just now. Um, and, and I appreciate, this is very, actually very reflective of what occurs in a Ray team meeting where we have people. Um, talking from a lot of perspectives, they're, they're hard conversations to have. And I feel like whenever we have an alternating points, points of view going around and we try to weigh them and, and see where people stand and where people feel. Um, we, we always value that honesty and that passion. And um we know like, um, I heard uh Rick basically his, his opinion on, on the idea of step restoration changed a lot tonight based on the comments. Um, knowing that people care about your voice is very important. And um I heard that from you all tonight and I know that the, the position you're in and the things you might want to be able to do, but you might be limited in that regard. Um, what keeps people around in hard times though is knowing that they're heard and, and knowing that these issues will be revisited. And will continue to be primary concerns moving forward. Um, so I value, you know, those decisions you, you, you have to make and how you're kept up at night, you know, worrying about the state of. You know, our kids' education and how we keep good teachers in the district. Um. You know, I've had, I've had to, I'm, I'm one of those teachers affected by the, by the step restoration. Um, you know, I've been in the district for sixteen years. I see myself as continuing in the district. I've faced a lot of considerations for family monetary decisions. Do I go elsewhere based on those? Ultimately, being heard and knowing your voice is, is heard matters a lot. And I, I do respect that from all of you because I, I know this is a tough decision. I know you may want to move forward on all those recommendations. And so we'll continue to talk about it in rating because this is what we do. This is the work we do and um. You know, I respect all of the tough decisions that you make, that you have to make, but, but definitely hearing what people are saying and wanting to do right by people matters a lot. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We, we, we appreciate all of you. Appreciate what you just said. I don't think there's a more important job or a harder job on the planet. And uh, I used to lay asphalt. But um, yeah, I think uh, we, we, we do have, as Michael said, we do have to look at this as, as it's a we, it's not like, we're like uh, in odds against each other. We do have to look at that like that. And uh, and for that reason, like I said, I, I, when I heard, when I first got on the board and heard about the freezes and all that, I was like, man. I like, I don't know how that could be, what that can, how it could fix that. But however, I do know that we can, we could try to never do that again. We can never do that again. And we can never, uh, we want to get in, stay in a place where we, we keep our staff, like we're not cutting staff. And you know, you know, because the budget has to be kept. And so, uh, I appreciate it.
So I've been just, um, just thinking, this has been, um, very difficult to hear, but very necessary. Um, for so many of you, you've even taught my children and I'm seeing familiar faces and I understand exactly because I'm in the trenches with you. I am, um, committed to hearing your feedback and doing everything as a board member along with the rest of the board members that we can so that you can get everything that you deserve and then some because none of us wants to lose another individual and it's very, it's very heart wrenching to hear those things is very difficult. I just value and support you guys. And so that's our commitment, um, so that you know that you're seen and heard and valued. And so we're going to do the best that we can.
Um, I, I totally want to say this to you guys, um. This is, this is like the biggest decision ever for me because it was, it's all about the teachers and the students. Um, and I know it's like huge. No one wants to see anybody lose their job. No one wants to see any of these schools be shut down. And I know like what you guys go through day to day. And I said it every day when I was trying to be a board member. So I know you guys are worthy of everything plus more. Um, and I know this is like a huge thing and I couldn't have said it more eloquently than what Dr. Knox said. Uh, and I know it's just like a huge compromise and for everyone, especially for the kids, we all know we want what's best for these children. And for, for you guys, uh, how we get there is like what we're trying to do. And I know you guys are fighting for these kids every day. Uh, and I know it because I've had these kids and I have my kids and I know what you guys did for my children. Uh, I'm fighting for you guys every day. I'm sitting up here and I'm asking everybody like, what we gonna do? What we gonna do? I didn't went to every board member and asking like, how do we make this right? How do we do it? So I want you guys to know I'm one hundred percent, how we gonna make this right? How we gonna get this done? Um, and I want you guys to know like, I see what you guys are doing for these children and I see what you guys are doing for this community. And I want this to be right. And I think we're going to get this thing right. So I will be around you guys, I'll be more visual, I haven't been in this position, but I will be a lot more visual. And uh, I didn't even know it was the rating meeting, Rick and Tavi out of fun stuff. Uh, so I will be there. And uh, I'm assuring you guys we will get this thing right. So I appreciate you guys and thank you.
Is there a most?
Can I, can I say something? I too want to, uh, say to the right team, uh, we're new, so a lot of us are just doing the catch up. And thank you for the information that you sent. Please know it was read. I, I'm a reader and a writer. I'm, you're gonna see me up here reading and writing and when I read, I was like, oh no, no, no. I was doing like that. Now they need, I was, you know, I was charged up until Dr. Knox called. I think she saw the passion that some of us new ones that don't really know the history. And one on one, they took her and Mr. Gibson and I forget who else it was, took me step by step through where we are. I needed to know for real where we are, not what someone is just saying. And it made total sense. Being a former director at Niles for Children who had to work with the finances, I saw it. I saw where we are. And I do not want you all to know, my heart is definitely for you teachers. I was so impressed with the little boy who ran through here tonight and saw his teacher. Mister, he could, his daddy's trying to get him on through, come on boy, come on, trying to get him to this thing. No, he wanted to speak to his teacher. That said something to my heart, that these kids love you. And I, 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 I used to tell my staff when we had, we were down to bare bones and we were, and I knew we were going to lose staff because people have to make a living. People have to take care of their kids and it touched my heart. Well, one by one, Dr. Douglas, we gonna stay. We gonna stay because just to go back and tell the stu, the kids, the residents who live where we were, that the, the staff was going to have to leave, they couldn't even handle the thought of that. And I'm telling you, God bless them, we're staying. So we gonna work. Thank you. I hate to hear you leaving. I could hear the passion in your voice for Raytown. I hate that you are leaving. And it ain't too late to turn around.
Probably telling me.
Yeah, girl, stay with us, hang in here with us. But I'm telling all the other teachers, hang in with us, hang in with us. This team is working hard to make sure that you are going to be blessed. We believe in you, we believe in you, we believe in you.
Right.
I want to apologize to you because I didn't want you to think that it was a character thing with me. It's not a character thing. So hopefully you will receive that from me.
Thank you. I also was, um, just really interested in some of the things that were mentioned. Um, we have the non-monetary things. And I think those things go a long way in making people comfortable. And just I'd be interested in conversations with Ray team of things possibly um, of other things that could be that, that don't cost a thing.
There are motions.
I moved at the board of, Mr. President, I'm with the board of education, increased personal business days, PBD from four days per school year to five days per school year. Two percent increase to the base and one step increase to the salary schedule for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded.
Mr. President. I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm still fully in favor of the three percent to the base. So I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. So procedurally, I'll be able to ask for, to revisit this vote later if we see that the balances are going to be higher than what we think they're going to be. So I'm just saying that as, that doesn't bind the board anything, that's just my opinion, so. Someone, someone who's, who votes with the majority can ask for reconsider, vote to reconsider at a later time.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, I wanted to, uh, express my appreciation to the, uh, uh, Raytown community. Uh, as you know, uh, we recently, uh, received a yes vote on a thirty-five million dollar bond. That's a, a, a tremendous accomplishment, um, a tremendous message uh, to, to, of support to this board and so, or into the, to the, uh, school district. And so, um, we have Mr. Uh, Joe Kinder, who is with Stiefel. He is a representative of a firm that helps us with the sale of bonds. And, uh, Mr. Ben Thompson from Gilmore and Bell. Uh, the two of them work together and making sure that we get as much, um, and that, and that we can and also make sure that process runs smoothly. So they're here to, to answer any questions or speak on this, on this matter.
It's just on. Okay. Good evening. I'm Mr. Kinder with Stiefel. You can just call me Joe. Uh, good to see some of you again, good to see, meet some of you for the first time. I know that you have this resolution in front of you and you've had a long board meeting so far, but I do want to make sure that we're communicating with you what this resolution means and what's gone on behind the scenes and in the lead up to this so that you know that even though this is a one board meeting deal and we will be pricing your bonds tomorrow, that this was not, uh, poorly thought out or quickly done, so to speak. So, uh, usually typically what you would see from us is this would be a meeting where we would just discuss what we think the plan should be based on your goals and objectives to, to get, create the desired outcomes for you. In this case, we're moving a little bit faster and we have worked as quickly as we can to be able to actually price your bonds and lock in final rates tomorrow. And that's what this resolution is related to. Now, the reason that we've moved quickly is based on some things that are happening in the market here locally and recently. And that is largely being driven by the failure of some nation, nationwide banks like Silicon Valley Bank. What that caused in our market was a slight backup, which means kind of slightly lower interest rates and a rising interest rate environment. We didn't know how long that would hang on for. So in the background, just in case you were superstitious, we didn't let you know that we did this prior to the election. But we went ahead with, uh, Gilmore and Bell Bond Council and got most documentation prepared and ready to roll for you. This is a process issuing bonds that typically takes eight to ten weeks. We've got to wait thirty days from an election anyway, so we couldn't have been here prior to, uh, May fourth, even talking to you about this and, and authorizing this resolution. But what we tried to do is set you up to be able to act as quickly as you could. Uh, so that when this market dip, you'd be able to take advantage of that. And then we also see a little bit of what we call an inversion in our yield curve. And all that means to you is, believe it or not, borrowing money out one year is more expensive than borrowing money seven years right now. So we're actually charging more interest on shorter, shorter maturities. That doesn't really impact your ability to repay your debt. But the quicker we can get that money in the door for you all, that sits in your capital projects fund, not in your debt service fund. So those are monies that you can use toward capital improvements. So we want to be able to lock in rates as quickly as we can in this slightly backed up environment and be able to achieve your finance plan in your debt service fund. And these bonds will only be paid out of debt service. So that dedicated levy is a property tax levy and it can only be used to pay bricks and mortar debt, general obligation debt. You cannot use it to pay teachers or do anything that takes operating the school district. So we know we can execute the pla, plan of finance for you on that side of things and we know rates have backed up a little bit. So we wanted to be ready for you all. On the other side of that, having that money in your bank account sooner, even as you're going to spend it now, allows you to earn some interest on that for the first time really in a decade or, or greater, where you can actually earn some meaningful interest on that. And I think the number might be a million dollars or so. We're not handling your investments on how that goes. But you might have another additional million dollars to be able to do additional improvements that you may, may not have to do out of your budget otherwise. So hopefully help your budget that way as well. So because we're going so quickly, we wanted to move forward, we want to let you do your reorganization last week. But this is part of a long range plan that's been going on for some time. And I do want to take a quick moment to say congratulations. And also to inform you that you probably know this, but passing any election is hard. And passing an election, particularly with new board members and new cabinet level executives, is incredibly difficult to gain the trust of your community. My dad was a superintendent for over thirty years and he used to say, these bond issues are a trust exercise with your community. It's something that where you go in and you get a chance to interact with them, engage with them. And whether or not they pass, doesn't always mean that they do or do not trust you. But in order for them to pass, they have to trust you and the work you're doing and the administration and the, the tasks that you've set in front of them. And you did something that is very, very difficult. And you did it with flying colors. And so congratulations on that. That is a big deal to be able to go out and ask your community two questions that will hopefully help you with some of your budget issues, but also help you improve those facilities for your kids. And so congratulations to you all. It's a big deal. I just, I didn't want you not to hear that, having been somebody who's been involved in over seven hundred, I think of these now in almost twenty years. So good job. Congratulations to you all. Uh, with that planning, we knew that we were going to be in a good spot to be able to do this as you look towards your facility side of things. So we want to make sure as you go through your strategic planning process that you know what your capabilities are. This does not tie you up in terms of what you can do in the future with your debt issuance. We did get really close to your body capacity. Okay? So that is something that the state limits how much debt you can have outstanding to essentially fifteen percent of your assessed value. We got really close to that number this year. So we've essentially exhausted your ability now to go out and do your debt. But the other limiting factor on, on how, how much debt you can issue and how often is what your cash flows look like in your debt service fund. Now, you haven't done a ton of improvements over the last fifteen years, so we've got some good room there. But you've also been great stewards of the district's money. And you all are in good shape to be able to not only do this bond issue, pay this off without having to increase taxes, but potentially be able to come back and somewhere in three to five years and go back out to your body capacity again. And that number could be as much as fifty, sixty million dollars. That will largely depend on what your assessed value is at the time. You will recoup assessed value or you will hopefully increase in assessed value and that will help your body capacity and then pay off debt in that time as well. So as we pay down debt, we gain capacity. As we grow, we gain capacity. But you all, from a flexibility standpoint, doesn't mean you have to do anything and it doesn't mean you have to borrow that much. But you're in position to be able to go back out even with this debt that you're doing now and be able to come back in three to five years and go back up to that capacity once again when that comes back. So your levy is designed to do that. We in Missouri have these no tax increase bond issues that we live and breathe on in terms of school districts on what they do. And so we purposefully try to set your, your levy and design your levy to be able to do those things so you can continue to come back. So with that in mind, you'll see that I'm going to pass out numbers to you in a second that are hot off the presses. We're going to mark it tomorrow. You're going to see something that looks like what we call a barbell. So you're going to see some payments that are pretty big and a lot of principal up early on. And then you're going to see your payments drop off. And you're going to see the payments come back on, on this bond issue at the backside of that. That is very targeted and designed. Believe me, you are amortizing principal and interest throughout the entire time of this bond issue. But what we like to talk about your debt service fund is, is one common plan of finance. It's your mortgage, whether you've refinanced it or whether you've taken some equity out or whatever you've done. All of those payments, we want to look at as one common plan of finance. And the way that we execute a financing for you when we're in a low interest rate environment, and believe me, even though they've come up, they're still historically very low, is that we want to take advantage of good cash flows you have, positive cash flows you have now. And actually, we're going to pay a bunch of this down almost in cash. You're going to have a large maturity coming up this March. We do interest payments in September, interest and principal in March, and that's to allow your tax revenues to come in. But you will have big, a big principal payoff already on these bonds right up front. We're going to utilize some reserves that you have sitting in your debt service fund that can only be used to pay that bricks and mortar debt and basically pay that off almost interest free. Uh, but then we'll, we'll allow your other debt to be amortized. And then we'll also hopefully free up some cash flows for you to be able to do that next no tax increase bond issue should you need it. And then we want to make sure we're borrowing, we can go out as far as twenty years that we're borrowing. And then we want to make sure we're borrowing, we can go out as far as 20 years that we're borrowing as long as we can. Right now, because interest rates are still historically low as we look back over the last 60 or 70 years, even though they've come up a little bit. So that's the plan. I'm going to pass out these numbers for you all. Oh, I'm sorry. I did want to mention bond premium. We are planning on issuing these bonds at a premium. And what that means is we can't, there are two different measurements that we use for your bonds. The yields are what the yields are. So a yield is essentially what rate, at what rate an investor is willing to pay for your bonds. We actually break your bonds up, sell them off in $5,000 increments to the highest bidder. It's, we'll conduct an auction tomorrow. Highest bidder for you all means lowest possible yield. With that, we, we cannot control the yields. We cannot control where investors are willing to pay. We're going to use our 350 plus bond salesman with access to over 300,000 investor accounts to find you the lowest yields. I promise you that. But we can impact the actual interest rate that you pay. We get to set that rate anywhere in the state of Missouri from zero to 9.99%. Right now, what investors prefer is a premium coupon bond. And there are several reasons behind that that we can get into if you want. But what that means is we're going to set an interest rate on these bonds at above market interest rates. So your bonds are going to go off at about 4% on average over the course of the bonds tomorrow. We're actually going to likely set that unless you tell us otherwise at 5%. What that means is it's a break even for you all in terms of the present value of that. But investors then pay more than face value for that bond. So in order for them to buy then a thousand dollars worth of bonds, they have to pay something like 1,800. Well, no, that's, that's way too much. 1,080. If you're buying a hundred thousand dollars worth of bonds, it would be 108,000. And what that means is more money for you all in your capital projects fund upfront. You're not immune to what's going on to everybody through this cost inflation period as we've seen supplies be short, labor be short, and we know that projects have run a little bit high. You certainly, again, when we do our planning for this, we plan very conservatively. We want to make sure that we can bring you the amount of money that you need to be able to get your projects done. And particularly in these high inflationary environments, we planned even more conservatively on the rate side and hope to be able to bring that to you should you need it. And in this case, we think we'll get you about close to $38 million for construction. So that hopefully you can complete all of the projects that you've listed. And then again, hopefully be able to knock off some more between a little bit of cushion you have there for any overages and then maybe some interest earned. So that's the plan. I'm going to hand out these numbers. You feel free to ask any questions. The resolution itself, and I'll let Mr. Thompson cover it's a little bit different. It's called a parameters resolution. It's going to authorize President Burton to sign a bond purchase agreement tomorrow. It's the only thing we need signed on the day of. So I know I took a lot of time there, but I wanted to make sure that I got all of that out. Please, if you have any questions, let me know and I'll hand these out really quickly with your permission. Is that a, can I approach the deis, deis?
Yeah. And Ben Thompson with Gilmore and Bell, the district's bond council. I'll be brief as, as Joe passes these out. So what is in front of you, as Joe mentioned, is a parameters resolution for consideration. And what, what, how this differs a little bit, as Joe mentioned before, is that there's, there, the numbers are not set yet, right? So they're going to do pricing tomorrow throughout the morning and then they'll have final pricing numbers. There are parameters within the resolution that staple must abide by. And if, if the resolution is approved and adopted tonight, they will, they will price using those parameters. And if those parameters are hit, then essentially it's a, a springing action where the, the resolution is approved and adopted. At that point, we will gather signatures on all the other bond documents. We'll put together the final offering document that goes out to investors to, to kind of give the demographic financial overview of the district. And then we will also put together a transcript that we will send to the state auditor of Missouri, who reviews this, to these transcript to make sure that everything, the boxes are all checked from a legal constitutional standpoint. And then, once they, we get their approval, we will close this bond issue on May 25th and funds will be put into the district's project, capital projects fund. And you have the money there to spend.
Mr. President.
May 25th.
Mr. President. So yeah, Joe, I was a little bit bored there for a while. Until you said bond premium.
Hey.
3.4 is nice. Very nice. That's more than our premium from our $50 million last bond issue. So, yeah, that's really, that's really good news. You, you're pretty confident in that?
Yeah, th- this is the scale we, we've been, that we went out and pre marketed today. We've been marketing the bonds for about six total business, or well, about five business days for about a week.
You're going to sell them all tomorrow?
Where the plan is to sell tomorrow morning and we've gotten good reception so far. I did, I did for, fail to mention that you will be the first pricing bond issue that we have, all the bonds that passed in April. And now I, I said locally, there's some, some market consideration as well. We did a St. Louis Public Schools bond here about a month ago. Were you involved?
No, it's not.
And we had, it was about a hundred million dollar deal and we had almost a half a billion dollars worth of orders, which that means that we're able to then lower interest rates because of the interest. There hasn't been a lot of what we call Missouri paper, which means Missouri bonds that carry the double tax exemption within the state of Missouri come out since the beginning of the calendar year, which is a positive, which means there's a lot of demand in the market. So we did, not only did we have a little bit of positive from the national market, but we've got a lot of demand here locally. And so to be the first one out the gate, we hope is a good thing. And one of the reasons that we, we.
3.5 is more than we thought it was going to be. And so if we have that and the interest from putting it in, well, yeah, that's good.
And next time I'll try to be more entertaining.
Yeah. Well, I'll be as bored as I can be for $500,000.
Can you talk about the bond capacity again? Kind of what the, where we are?
Yeah.
When we, when we can achieve having capacity again.
So right now, and this is just what, what looks good to Joe Kinder, just for your planning purposes. So you can do whatever you want with this. But we project that if the numbers that the county has given us preliminarily are correct for this coming year and we pay down debt, so we, we do have one more years of quasi data. We don't know how that will come in. And then, you know, the next couple of years come in, but we, we've actually plugged in, I think it's a $65 million bond issue in 2027. Should you need that? So you, I mean, you have some real flexibility. You could do the, the largest bond project that you've ever done in this district. Still, even with the payments that you've had now, a lot of that's just, again, aggressively paying down debt that you all have done, as well as some growth in the community and growth and reassessment that we've seen over the last, really three reassessment cycles, which happen every other year. So including this year, about the last five years worth of AV growth has put you in a good spot to be able to come back quite, quite a bit quicker. Then, then ordinarily. So you have, so we like, what we like to see is about 75 or 80% payment in reserve in case something were to ever happen. These are local taxes. And again, you should have all that revenue collected before your big payments occur in March. But we just want to have what we consider deem a healthy reserve. I think right now, because again, because of some of the reassessment that you've had, some of the growth that you've had in excess of what we planned for, I think you're closer to two years worth of payments, aren't you Jackie? In, in reserve. So we're going to take that and put that to work immediately on paying off debt. So we're going to put that, we're almost essentially going to affect a transfer. You're going to get that in your fund for earning money in your fund for, and also free up for projects and then spend that down out of your debt service and still feel that you have a very comfortable reserve. But just spend some of those, I wouldn't call them excess reserves, but some of that cushion that we feel comfortable about. That has, we got an email on about two weeks ago that the, the new treasurer is no longer going to require that the superintendent sign a certification that she, under penalty of, yeah, felonious perjury, whether you make decisions about the health and wellness of your students and staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you don't have to do that anymore. So we will be in the direct deposit program once again, you utilize it, piggybacking on the state's double A plus rate.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will let you know immediately tomorrow as soon as we know something and then we'll be back next month.
Good evening. Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton.
We, what? Does it take as long as you want?
Full house. One thing I did want to piggyback on with, with Joe said is that this money is a different money than what we pay teacher salaries with. This bond may exclusively for bricks and mortar, which I think is, is something that we need to remember of what we're doing. What you have before you right now is, is easy. It's a abatement. Currently, we have asbestos floor tile in our corridors. This is two different companies that we've made a motion to approve, to be able to get it in, abate the floor so we can move forward with our construction process.
It's good motion. Then we can discuss.
I move the board approve Gurkhan Environmental Abate, Raytown Middle School, Westford Elementary, the amount of $97,450, contingency of $9,745, total amount not to exceed 107,195. And InSCO for the abatement of Eastwood Hills, the amount of $27,620, but contingency of $2,762 for a total amount not to exceed $3,380.
What'd you say? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No ma'am, we don't have enough time to be able to do that and still meet our deadlines. So that's why I split it up with, between two companies where we'll have multiple crews and multiple locations at the same time to meet our ending.
Take your time. Motion passed. All right. Next we had a, well, need a motion. Motion made and seconded.
Okay. Hi, it is, Justin and Sandy are both with us from Hollis Miller. I may go through a little bit. Sandy's going to walk through scope and sequence of milestones. And then Justin's going to come in and answer your question about hard costs, soft costs. New Kirk and Novak is who we approved is our CMAR. Everywhere I believe, we've been going back through getting pricing back. If you look at the lower, you'll have one that says total bid to budget is the first tab, I believe. On bid day, when we came in, we came in at 2.6 million dollars over budget. So we had a $35 million bond, bond we were running, we came in 2.6 million over. We went through some processes with myself, Ms. Cochran, Mr. Durham, New Kirk, Novak, went through and looked at every single sub. So your electricians, your HVAC, your plumbers and went through to where we delivered the same quality project, but were able to push back on subs to get that price down. We dropped that price to 1.9 million over, down to 1.7 to 1.6 and were able to get us under budget. If you look at the sign that says credit for previous paid design costs, there's a credit of 1.3 million and change. We have been talking about this. This is my fifth year in this position. We have been talking about South High since I have been here and I'm ready to start doing things about our issue at South High rather than talking about it. So that is, that is those previous play costs that we've used previous bond money for. We also expect, we have our 2019 bond, which we're finishing this summer. Then we're starting our 2023 bond now. So we, we're anticipating about $750,000 surplus in our, in our 2019 bond. We have pre-heavy contingencies in with our summer work. We anticipate those contingencies as not to use all those contingencies that will bump that 750 number up even higher than that. So the all-in price not to exceed the 34,778. It is a lot of money. What questions do you have about money? And then we'll talk through sequence. Yes, ma'am. That's what we, that's what we ran the budget when Dr. Martin Knox, myself, Mr. Gibson went to the community and did all of our forums. That was made perfectly clear to everybody that was going to be these projects. Now with the, with the premium that, that Mr. Kinder just spoke about and the, hopefully we won't use all the contingency money we have built into the project. There will be an opportunity at the end of the project to be able to hopefully do more projects. That what we run into though, is if we would have had the same conversation in 2019 and then look at the sky high inflation, we wouldn't be able to, we, we wouldn't be able to do that. So based off the facts we have now, we're going to go with, yes, we'll be able to complete this bond and then hopefully have some premium left over to do other projects. When we talked about bonding capacity, we did a bond assess, a needs assessment. This showed a $277 million need within the district. We knocked off about 50, our last bond was 50. We paid down three trails at 13 million, I believe. So we really did about $44 million worth of work. Now we're going to do another $35 million worth of work, but this 35 we're doing now is, it's outside of that 277. So when we're looking at, Mr. Burton asked a question about bonding capacity. You know, those will be later conversations down the line. For Farming Arts Center. So the, the scope and sequence, and Sandy will get to the details on here in just a second. But we're basically going to build the performing arts center, have it fully functional. And that's a new standard. It's a new building that's connected to the northeast corner of the building. And yes, ma'am. And then when that's, when that's done, then we'll go through and demolish the existing performing arts center and build auxiliary gym. And in the meantime, we'll be building auxiliary gym at Raytown High School as well. And that will, that will sit, it's a standalone building, a FEMA shelter that will be, is set on 61st street and where those existing parking lots are. We're going to go through that scope and sequence here shortly.
All right. Motion made and seconded. No, you don't have a second.
Anybody like to go through scope and sequence?
There's two attachments.
So, good evening, morning. Congratulations on the passing of the bond. That's very exciting. As Josh said, these, this project in particular, we've been talking about for quite a while. So this attachment that's in your packet, I'm just blowing it up here. So it's a little bit larger. Mrs. Salisbury, the, there are basically three projects going on at South High School. The first one is the PAC and we are starting officially next week. We're going to start setting fences. You're going to see signs going up and there's going to be work mobilizing even before school is out. That first orange section is the Performing Arts Center. It's going to include the auditorium, the stage craft, the new pre-function and entry. Officially, that will be completed estimated at September of next year. So the idea is that that will be ready for students to use in the 2023, 24 school year. As soon as that is completed, then we will start demolishing the corridor between the existing gym and the existing auditorium. That's ideally going to happen, start happening next summer. But we have to wait to make sure that everything is ready to go for that. So that'll be confirmed.
Somebody jump in there for just a second. We will, I will come back to you with, we'll do monthly updates of progress. At that time, there, there will be a time where I may come to you and say, hey, we are not done, but we're going to be done. I want to go ahead and go through and demolish the, the existing performing arts center for safety reasons to do it during summertime. We don't have kids in attendance.
So the dates on this attachment don't fully reflect that, but that's what we're talking about again for the safety of students. If we can get some of that work done, it really has to do with access. The intent here is that that performing arts center will be completely operational while when the students come back before we demolish the old auditorium. So we'll build back that corridor between the existing gym and the new auxiliary gym. That auditorium, which is sitting where the green square is right now, that's the existing auditorium. It's going to be demolished and that's where the new auxiliary gym will be built. And so construction will basically start in next week and we will be completed in June of 2025 at South High School. And so construction will basically start in next week and we will be completed in June of 2025 at South High School.
Josh, I know you said, maybe you can say it, probably.
True.
Longer. But, um. You just got through with the 30 and everything. And I know you said that.
Yes, it's for bricks and mortar and not for salaries.
Yeah, and I, I don't know about, I'm just, this thing. Probably make sure that once they see the building go off, they understand that this is not money designated salary.
So I think we've done a pretty good job being proactive about that when we've gone into the community. Uh, I've been at countless meetings with Dr. Martin Knox and Mr. Gibson, uh, in the, in the community, in our buildings, PTA meetings, musical performances, explaining those things. Uh, and also I'm in buildings daily, uh, going through teacher. I did this my 20th year in the district. Uh, teachers are not shy to ask me things. Uh, so when we, when I'm walking through hallways, that's part of my job is to make sure they understand that.
But, but they also know, need to know that the second question that we pass, that levy transfer does allow us to put money into the different funds. I'm excited for why we did that.
It's true.
Okay, so this is. This is the other attachment that's in your packet that's covering a little bit about schedule. Um, this is the position, um, of the new auxiliary gym for Raytown High School. Um, map is a little bit hard to read, but you can see all the parking lots that are shaded in gray. Just to the north of that is 61st Street, as Josh was referencing, and just above that is the current existing high school. So this will be across 61st Street located in that existing parking lot. And as you can see, we're expanding the parking around that from what is currently there. So we're going to take some away and then add more. Um, we're looking to break ground on that building in September of this year, 2023 and be finished by May of next year. So the students will be able to use that, um, after, uh, when they come back to school in 2024.
So my only question about that motion itself, we motioned to pay all this money to New Kirk Novak.
So it's the same as what we've done through, um, when we hard bid GC projects. So there's owner contingency in there, uh, that, so South High, unfortunately, the part that we're, this causes problems. The, the same contractor built the gymnasium that we're tying into. So we parry, we carried some heavier owner contingencies there in case we run into issues there. It's just the, the way the project's set up, um, it's.
But we are paying all the money to them and they're paying the actual bills.
Correct.
All right.
And then the same thing with any change order.
When do we have to pay them all the money as it goes?
As we do, just like a GC, as they bill monthly. That is all we have unless you have questions.
Oh, yeah.
We are working on a ground, we're working on a groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, Bruce and I have been in contact about that. As soon as we get some details worked out, we'll be in contact to set that date. Yes, and we have golden shovels already painted in my shop.
That's a very important part.
That's part of the, it'll be late. All right, well, ready to vote? Time to vote.
Being slapped, we lost that last. Time to vote.
That's been, it's great.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Rick, I'm going to say Rick got off, doesn't he? Rick got this meeting. Get back on. That's what I said, I think. Yeah. I thought he was going to say, he got to say his thing.
Mr. President. Mr. President. I'm with the board of president, depositary contract and pledge for banking services by UMB for a period beginning July 1st, 2023 for one year with an option renewed for up to four additional years upon satisfactory annual review.
Motion made and seconded. Just go to the end of the meeting, you get everything. We're good, we don't need to hear that. Surely you can do that. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
President, I'm really going to approve the 23, 4, common, hard services agreement in the amount of $1,000.
Okay.
Now, what are you doing? We good.
We're not going to even talk to you.
We good.
Thank you.
Yeah, we should have, we should have asked him some questions.
Yes.
I know that the board approved the May 8, I think, consent agenda as presented.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, I'll take a moment to read the donations. Donation of a hundred dollars towards the special person breakfast in May from Roxanne Newell to Three Trails Preschool. Donation of a hundred dollars toward delinquent student lunch accounts from Christine Lane to Spring Valley Elementary School. Donation of the big old tree children's book by Christopher Weston II. From Christopher Weston II to Southwood Elementary School. Donation of cards for free kids meal or mozzarella sticks for students. From Kayla Worsick at Applebee's to Raytown School District. Donation of 60 notepads and colored pencils from Vicky Turbo. At the Raytown Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, uh, to Raytown School District Sparkle Empowerment Conference. Donation of $500 toward lunch and snacks from Serve Pro of Lee Summit to Raytown School District Sparkle Empowerment Conference. Donation of $200 from Daniel Knotts at HCA. To Raytown Fire and Ice Robotics at Raytown South High School. Donation of scrubs of various sizes and colors totaling, totaling a thousand dollars. From Nancy Dorn to Raytown Schools Herndon Career Center. Donation of stuffed lunch worth $780 from Latrice and William Stevenson to Robinson Elementary. A donation of $500 from Smitty Belcher at P1 Construction to Herndon Career Center Welding Program. A donation of popcorn snack chips from Stephanie Castaneda, Castaneda at Sporting KC to Nutriles Early Learning Center. And a donation of Con Air set, a blow dryer, flat iron and curling iron, which I greatly appreciate. And for, uh, and. 5.25 Mary Ann Shears worth $300 from Kim Atkins at State Beauty Supply. To the Herndon Career Center Cosmetology. We thank you for all the donations that we're giving this month. We greatly appreciate it and know our kids do too. Let's vote. Motion made and seconded. I'm in favor. Meeting adjourned.